I'm Kelly McNicholas Curry, Chair of the Board, and in the room with me is Patty Klapper, Vice Chair, and joining us from home are Commissioners Steve Child and Francie Jacober. We expect Greg Poishman to be joining us shortly as well. So welcome today. I hope everyone is staying safe and healthy. First thing on our agenda is any additions or deletions to the agenda, please. John Peacock, County Manager.
Yeah, thanks, Kelly. We have one proposed addition to the agenda, which is an intergovernmental resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Garfield County for housing of Picking County detainees in the Garfield County Jail.
Okay. So I do have a question, John. When we initially talked about this, we talked about it as an emergency resolution?
As an emergency.
Okay. Okay. So I don't believe it's presented to us that way in the documents that we received, so I just want to make sure in terms of form and procedure that we handle this correctly and place it appropriately in the agenda. So should we be amending it to be an emergency resolution, or do we treat it as a first read?
So I would turn, I believe the Sheriff's Department has been working with Rye on this. So for the Sheriff's Department, an emergency resolution would become effective immediately with a hearing ratifying the decision. If it's adopted as presented as a resolution, it would become effective after the second reading, which would be two weeks out. And so I guess, Kelly, if you don't mind checking in with the Sheriff's Department on the intent, and then we can make the appropriate adjustment.
Okay, thank you. So I'll check in. I see Sheriff Joe DeSalvo has joined us on the line, as well as Attorney Richard Neely.
I found this on the web.
Who has assisted. So our clarification that we need is, is this an emergency resolution or not? And I'll look to Joe or Rye.
Oh, thanks, Kelly. I didn't know if you were talking to me or possibly Rye. Yeah, I think as soon as possible, based on the last few weeks' events, I think we are planning for a March 1st move, hopefully, or move of inmates. I don't know if that would give us enough time for two readings, but I would like to request an emergency resolution.
Okay, thank you. Rye, do you see any problem with that?
No, if there's a reason to do it as an emergency, we can just amend the title of the resolution and set conferment to a reading. One thing the resolution does not do right now, and we can identify this when we're considering it, but the Home Rule Charter sets out the need to define a basis for doing the resolution as an emergency as opposed to a normal public process. And when we get to that, you know, it sounds like Sheriff DeSalvo's already provided some basis for that. And when we get to consideration of it, I can give the Board the language of what is required for an emergency ordinance, and we can define it as such at that time.
Okay, thank you. So I would suggest we do have another emergency ordinance on the agenda. These are down right before Landy's, so you all will be on the line for a minute here. As item number 13, is that?
We put it in as 12B.
Why? Why not just 13? Oh, we have, because we have another 13. Sure. Okay, so I will look for a motion, and then we can have some discussion. Steve? No worries.
I make a motion to make this item number 12B, emergency ordinance approving a resolution, approving an IGA with Garfield County regarding the jail.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion about the placement of this on the agenda or amending the agenda for this item? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the motion to amend the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to public comment. I know we have one. Let's see. Okay, I believe Lee Mulcahy and Mrs. Mulcahy have joined us today. If you could unmute, please, star six.
Yes, ma'am, Kelly. You said you were going to show her video.
Yep. Are you ready to do that first?
Please, ma'am.
Okay. Yep, at the request, Mrs. Mulcahy has a video to show for her three minutes of public comment. Thanks, Terry, for queuing that up.
Congressman, we appreciate your coming on tonight. So I don't think of you as someone given to hyperbole, throwing wild charges out there. You measure your words. You said you are concerned that we are moving towards a police state. Tell us why you're worried.
Well, Tucker, the very first thing that any president does after they've gotten elected, any member of Congress, and every one of us who has served in the military, is we take an oath, and we swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. The reason that this is the first thing that we do is because our Constitution is the foundation of this country and who we are. It is what guarantees us our civil liberties, our freedoms, that are endowed to us not by any man or person in government, but are endowed to us by our Creator. And so this is something that we must all unite around. This is something that we recognize that those who stormed the Capitol on January 6th trying to stop Congress from fulfilling their constitutional responsibilities, they were acting as domestic terrorists, undermining our Constitution. As you pointed out in my video, those like John Brennan, Adam Schiff, and others are also acting as domestic terrorists because they are also undermining our Constitution by trying to take away our civil liberties and rights that are guaranteed to us. If you don't mind, I'd like to just quote John Brennan directly, so that people can't say, "I'm taking this out of context." Directly, John Brennan says, "Members of the Biden team who have been nominated or appointed are now moving in laser-like fashion to try to uncover as much as they can about what looks very similar to insurgency movements they've seen overseas, where they germinate in different parts of the country and gain strength and bring together an unholy alliance, frequently of religious extremists, authoritarians, fascists, bigots, racists, nativists, and even libertarians." This is the extent that they are going to try to undermine the rights and freedoms that are guaranteed to every one of us, and it's incredibly dangerous.
It is so dangerous, and it's also happening on a greater scale than we've ever seen before, because as you point out in the video that I hope every one of our viewers will find on the Internet, it isn't simply government officials and our intel and law enforcement agencies, it's also private businesses, it's these giant tech monopolies. What can the rest of us do to protect ourselves, to keep free speech alive in a moment when it's being crushed all around us?
First of all, keep speaking. I think this is the most important thing at a time when there is so much fear and threats, and the kind of fomenting of fear that we're seeing coming from the likes of John Brennan. Take a stand. We must all take a stand and unite around these principles in our Constitu-
Okay, thank you, Terry. And I'm not sure, Lee, was that for your comment or for Mrs. Mulcahy?
No, that was for her. My name is Lee Mulcahy. I'm grateful for many things, one being my 85-year-old mom, who you are trying to evict, just published her first book into Africa. We're also grateful we're asking the State Supreme Court this week for an emergency stay on our eviction. The Chair of this Board is a neighbor, lives a block away, worked for the United Nations, is the APCHA representative on this board that is evicting an 85-year-old in the middle of a pandemic. Frankly, an authoritarian who believes in collectivism over individualism, which made this country great, stated to this board that justice in our eviction favors APCHA. And it is laughable that Lee Mulcahy objects to our secret sessions. To that, I'd like to read a letter from our attorney. "I am the Mulcahy family attorney. I reside in Denver, but have been following the local media coverage of the Mulcahy's case since I was retained roughly two years ago. There are some important aspects of the Mulcahy's case that have been lost in the local media coverage. These aspects impact not only the Mulcahy's, but all residents in Picking County, subject to APCHA's administrative guidelines and oversight. At the administrative level pursuant to APCHA's own regulations in effect at the time, APCHA was required to wait a full 60 days between issuing its first notice of compliance and issuing a notice of violation. In dealing with Lee, APCHA violated its own regulations, prematurely accelerated the notice of violation, and issued the notice only 39 days into the 60-day waiting period. Lee has always maintained he was not in violation of APCHA regulations. APCHA then brought a lawsuit in state court to enforce APCHA's final judgment and to obtain an order directing the Mulcahy's to sell their home. However, two months before filing the state court lawsuit, APCHA amended its guidelines to remove any evidence of the 60-day waiting period requirement. In state court, APCHA's procedural irregularities continued. Lee represented himself and APCHA, seeking as quick of a judgment as possible, violated essentially every single procedural requirement in the Colorado Rules of Civil Procedure designed to protect the rights of litigants. In particular, despite being explicitly directed to do so, APCHA failed to serve a delay reduction order on Lee, which contained early case procedural information. APCHA failed to conduct a required early meet and confer conference with Lee to discuss case procedures and discovery. APCHA failed to provide required discovery disclosures to Lee, resulting in no discovery at all being provided in the case. APCHA failed to set a case management conference, and none was ever hailed. Important because the case management conference represents the only early procedural opportunity for a court to address the parties and ensure they are-
Thank you. Thank you, Lee. In the future, I'll ask that your mom present the video clip, so that you are each being awarded your three minutes for public comment. So thank you. And let's see, we'll give it another second to see if anyone else calls in for a public comment today. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment and turn to Commissioner comments. Patty?
Yeah, I just want to make a little announcement about an opportunity being presented by a local restaurant owner to help provide some food sources for our local food bank. It's Ryan Chadwick of the Aspen Pie Shop. He's working with Aspen Family Connections. So if people go into the pie shop and buy a regular-priced pizza and post a photo of it to social media with the tag "Aspen Pie Shop," the Aspen Pie Shop will donate a cheese or pepperoni pie to a local family. They'll give a coupon to Family Connections that they will then present to people when they come in to pick up their goods from the food, local food bank. Ryan, it's going to start next week. He's going to run it for a week, see how it goes, and see if it's something the community supports, and then he will continue it. But he said, you know, he doesn't know how many people he would feed, and he, at the very bottom of the article in Aspen Daily News, closes with a thing about who doesn't like pizza. So if anybody has the opportunity, please go down and participate. And I'm also trying to reach out to other local restaurants to see if they can in some way do the same kind of program that's kind of, there's a template that Ryan Chadwick has set up in order to make it easy for other restaurants to sign up to do the same thing. So please, it helps to support the local community, at the same time helping to support local restaurants. So it would be great, and as Ryan said, who doesn't like a pizza? Thank you, Kelly.
Sure. Other Commissioner comments? Yes, Steve?
Thank you, Kelly. This is the last call for electric space heater. There have been quite a few collected in the Aspen area to take to two Lakota Indian reservations in South Dakota. The deadline for donating them is February 28, and you can take them to the Aspen Fire Station. 24 hours a day, they have a door open into the lobby, and you can leave them in there. These heaters could be the ones that were donated by Black Hills Energy, or they could be another one that you have that you want to donate to the cause. The people could really use them up there. They go to the elders in their population and also people who have disabilities. So they go to a good cause, people who really could use some supplemental heat to make their lives more comfortable in a place that can be pretty windy and cold sometimes. So thank you very much to those who have donated, and I hope we see some more get donated this week. This is the last week. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you, Steve. Other Commissioner comments? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to the consent agenda. We have three items that I'll list on the consent agenda today. Minutes of special meetings on June 2, July 7, December 15, and regular minutes from February 10, sorry, all from last year, and minutes from February 10 of this year. Resolution of the B OCC to ratify the appointment of Margaret Simmons to the Basalt Regional Library Board of Trustees. And finally, a motion to authorize staff to submit and enter into an agreement with the State of Colorado Department of Local Affairs through the Property Owner Preservation Program for emergency housing payment for Phillips Mobile Home Park tenants. Anyone on the Board wish to pull any of those items out of the consent agenda for discussion? Steve?
I'd like to pull number two, the appointment for the library board.
Okay. Any other items any Board members wish to pull for discussion? Okay, so I will ask for a motion approving items one and three, the minutes of the meetings listed, as well as the motion to enter into the property, or the Property Owner Preservation Program.
So moved.
Thank you, Greg.
Seconded. I second.
Greg moved. Francie seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so then up for discussion is item number two, the resolution of the B OCC to ratify the appointment of Margaret Simmons to the Basalt Library Board of Trustees. And I see, I believe Charlotte is here to present this item.
Hello, Kelly.
Hi.
And the Board.
Okay, Charlotte, I'll take-
I'll just, okay, I'll just go through that this person was interviewed back in, I believe George and Steve interviewed her along with Eileen, who was appointed for Picking County previously. And this is an appointment to fill Kristi Bisch's appointment, and she's not renewing. She's a current member, but she's not renewing. So Steve, go ahead.
Well, yeah, we, George and I did interview both candidates. They were both very well qualified to be on the library board. For that earlier appointment, we appointed Colleen because she was younger and had kids in school. And by appointing her, we were getting more diversity on the board there at the Basalt Library. Not that Margaret Simmons wasn't qualified, she is so well qualified to serve on this board, and she's been very active her whole life in unity things. So at this point, she is the only one who applied for this new opening on the board. And rather than interview her again just so soon after the other one, and having Francie and me do another interview, that didn't seem necessary. So that's why we recommend that she be appointed to this position. I would make a call out that we need a correction on the resolution. It says that it was decided to appoint her on December 18. I think maybe that was the date of the interview, actually. So I think the resolution would need to be corrected to get the proper wording in there.
I'll make that correction. Thank you, Steve. And I will get that final corrected.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this resolution? Steve, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve this resolution appointing Margaret Simmons to the Basalt Regional Library Board with the correction amendment to the wording of the resolution.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll just thank Margaret, who is a lovely person, for taking up this additional role. And I'll call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Okay, moving-
Thank you, and I'll let the Basalt Library know.
Thanks, Charlotte. Moving on to individual consideration items, first readings that are set for public hearing on March 10. Item number four, an ordinance of the B OCC amending the Senior Services Council bylaws. And Charlotte, again, if you're ready, or if there's senior services staff you want to hand this off to.
I think Patty might be joining us, but she might, I think she was talking about joining us about 12:30, so I feel a little early. This is just a few amendments that were made by the Senior Services Council, and all bylaws must be approved by the Board of County Commissioners, so this is coming to you now for final approval.
Okay. Any questions for Charlotte on the changes? Patty?
Yeah, Charlotte, in reading the redline copy, for which I thank you, it makes it so much easier to have a redline copy, so we know exactly what's being changed and added. The references regarding the treasure, was that because we kind of eliminated that position on the Senior Services Board?
That is my understanding.
That's what I thought I remembered in having this thing spoken with maybe someone. But, yeah, okay. So, yeah, I just, again, really appreciate having the redline copy. And I think most of it is just cleanup language and changing the name to the new Northwest Cog name, which is-
Vintage.
Vintage? Yes, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Charlotte on this? Steve?
So, yes, just to clarify, the Senior Counsel had been raising money and spending it on various things, and then found out that they were not allowed to do that by the, I don't know if it's the Home Rule Charter or what exactly. So that's why the different changes in eliminating the treasure, you don't have to do a treasures report, because they are no longer raising money and spending it anymore. So that just totally makes sense. And I did find out one thing, reading the changes again today, that I never knew before, and that is that the Chairman of the Senior Services Council is one of the two members of the Vintage Board, the RAC, it's called the RAC. I'm not sure exactly what the RAC stands for. Patty, maybe you could tell us that.
Retirement, I don't know.
Regional Advisory Council?
Oh, Regional Advisory Council.
Is that Patty who just came in?
Other Patty.
Yeah, I remember that. Okay, any further-
So I'd be glad to make the motion-
Go ahead.
-to approve the ordinance of the Board, amending the Senior Services Council bylaws. This is the first reading, and it's set for public hearing and second reading on March 10.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Try to let others do that.
Any further discussion? I do have a topic, I guess. In recent conversation, there was a little bit of discussion about whether to remove the term limits on the membership, since there are continuing, there are members that would wish to continue to serve in that role. And so the way it's written now is a member would serve for a four-year term and then have to step down as a year, for a year, and then could come back as an alternate. And I'm wondering, has, is that the direction that the Council still wishes to take, or would they do? I see Patty raising her hands, if you'd like to address that.
Yeah, I can address that. We still want to give the opportunity for people not to feel like they have to serve a life sentence on the Senior Counsel. We want, yeah, so we want people to have the opportunity to have that year off and then not to come back on. And, yeah, so I think it, while we recognize it does create a little bit of a hardship, where we, when sometimes we have good members that we would like to have continue, we still think it's important to give that opportunity for people to rotate off. And we do remind them that they can continue, they can continue participating, but it just means, you know, they can't vote. So we, the plan right now is to keep things as they are.
Okay. Thanks, Patty. I appreciate that. Is there any further questions or discussion before I call the vote? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Nice to see you, Patty, and thank you, Patty and Charlotte.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye. Moving on to our next items, five and six are very similar. Ordinances of the Board of County Commissioners approving space leases at the Phillips Mobile Home Park and cabin leases at the Phillips Mobile Home Park. So I see Jody Smith here to, and the Attorney's Office here to discuss these with us. And if you would like to talk about them together, feel free, and then we can vote on them as two separate ordinances.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jody Smith, and the Facilities Director. And basically- And basically, we purchased the Phillips Mobile Home Park in February 2018. That was 35 mobile homes, four cabins, and one ranch house, and a total of 76 acres. And the purpose of purchasing this was to preserve the, or the housing program there. We purchased the property with the housing impact fees, which are collected to develop workforce housing. Again, the intent was to incorporate this into our inventory, to maintain affordable housing for the program. The transition of the residents for both the cabins and the space lease, we grandfathered in the existing tenants where they don't have to do the APCHA qualifications at this point, but any new unit would qualify, any purchases or changes, they would have to qualify so that they're meeting those APCHA guidelines. But anybody grandfathered in for existing would remain the same. The, again, the APCHA resident occupied criteria is being employed in the Ryan Ford Valley for 1,500 hours, not owning any residential units in APCHA, their zone, and not having more than $900,000 in assets. So John Ely and the county's Attorney's Office have worked on these lease templates. The ordinance attached focuses on the transitioning and the grandfathering, the templates, and I think the most important change in there is that this would authorize the Facilities Director to execute the, any future leases, as we start to implement these new lease templates for both the housing and the space. The lease is standard, again, approved by the Attorney's Office, and really just fills out the additional, you know, fees, deposits, regulations, restrictions, that are the normal. And with that, are there any questions?
Steve?
Jody, I've been curious about the people who are retired. Now, I realize the ones who are there already are grandfathered in. If there is someone who has worked, worked in Pickens County, and they are now retired and wanted to move into one of the units or buy one of the units and live there, do the APCHA guidelines allow them to do that? Or do they have to be a worker to be able to move in as a new resident?
I'm going to ask John Ely to answer that question.
Sure. Steve, that's, that's a real predicament. The money that the county has to spend on affordable housing, and, and in particular, the Phillips Trailer Park acquisition and its improvement, is related to our impact fee. The impact fee allows the county to take money from developers in order to mitigate the consequences of that development's effect on employee housing. So the impact fee is tied to employee housing directly, as a consequence of increasing employment generation through a particular development. So to expand it into an area of, of, say, senior housing, or, or housing that has other dedicated purposes, like, well, there are, there are many different needs, it's, it's pretty problematic for us. It's, however, it's a different situation where someone is housed under the county's subsidy, either as a renter or an owner, at a time when they are an employee in the county, but then become retired. That change in status doesn't necessarily trigger a situation where we have to terminate their residency in the housing. But the, the availability of the housing for someone who is not employed, and therefore someone who doesn't relate to the reason why we collected money in the first place, is very difficult.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. I always wondered that and never knew the answer, so now I know.
And I'll just offer, Steve, from what I understand of the APCHA guidelines, is that you are not eligible to retire and retain your APCHA home until you've reached federal Social Security retirement age. And otherwise, you know, in your, in the biannual eligibility update affirmation process, if you had retired prior to that, you would not remain eligible under APCHA's guidelines. And that currently, for you to earn APCHA housing, you have to have worked for a minimum of four years prior to reaching that retirement age, before being able to retire in your housing, and APCHA is considering extending that to 10 years of work history, if that helps clarify that picture. But, yeah, I'm not sure. I guess the question for me then, for John, is if we're grandfathering people in, whether they would have to even go through the APCHA re-eligibility qualification every two years anyway?
That's a decision that's entirely up to the board. Our restriction is more under the parameters in which the money was collected. It's a board discretionary option to defer to APCHA's guidelines. In the past, we have done so just for ease of administration and for some consistency in the housing in and out of the city and the county of Aspen, so that there's, there's no, you know, advantage necessarily for someone being in unincorporated Pickens versus the city of Aspen. But, but like I said, it's, it's up to the board if you want to have your own criteria in that regard, or if you want to default to the guidelines you match.
Okay. Are there other questions for Jody or John? Patty?
Yeah, I have a few more specific questions. Jody, on the space lease agreement, there's no amount of rental payment or payable first date of, as there is on the cabin lease agreement. Is that because the amount of the spaces are different, or timeframes of payment are different?
If you look at the attachment B for the spaces, you can see that there is a list of all the tenants, the spaces, and what they pay, and all space leases are 400 at this point.
Okay. But why wasn't it entered then on the agreement, like it is for the cabin agreement?
I can, I can change that, but there may be a change once they go through APCHA. Again, yeah, John, I'm not exactly sure if APCHA says it's more, or is it a fixed price?
The only reason it's a blank in the form is to allow flexibility in filling out the form for the various tenants, that's all.
Because there may be some differences between the space leases and the cabin leases, because the cabin lease has a definite amount and a definite due date.
The cabin leases have always been uniform. Space leases, as you said, have, in the past, at least, had some discrimination between them. When the county acquired the property, they were all at one set amount. As we go forward, I don't know if that's going to change or not, as, you know, as the decision for an entity.
Okay. Plus, on both lease agreements, I found this interesting for notification of the park owner. It says, somebody above the age of 15 years old may accept a notice. How did they come up to the age of 15? I'm like, 16, you can drive, 18, you can, you know, buy cigarettes, but, you know, and enlist in the army, but 15, is there anything behind that? Standard language?
Yeah, I don't know why that, why that is established that way.
Okay. All right, because there's no way I would have allowed my 15-year-old son to accept anything. But the other thing is, under signs and advertising, does that also mean political signs, or is there a First Amendment right, a freedom of speech attached to that?
You got it for me?
Well, either one, either one of you, but that's a pretty, you know, that's a common place for people to go door to door and put, you know, their door hangers up and stuff during elections, and, because it's a, it's a true neighborhood. So now we're going to prohibit that?
Well, it is drafted as a prohibition. If the board wants to change that provision, you certainly have the ability to do so. There, there's always an element of free speech associated with signage, and there is an ability to restrict that and to constrain it to reasonable levels, which in this case can be zero. But, but if the board wants to continue that language for all other signs, or make an exception for political or campaign signs, that's, that's a decision for the board.
Well, I would hate it to come back to people who then claimed we were, you know, restricting their freedom of speech. I went through that in my own homeowners association, and it was decided if you kept them on your property, you know, without, you know, totally, you know, obliterating your home. So I would like to see that allowed down there, because that's a good way to get people involved in, in elections, whichever side of, you know, the election they may be on. So I would hate to restrict that down there. So however you feel that it's most appropriate to address that, I think would be appreciated. And then I also noticed on the, one of them, for the amount of dogs is left open, is that going to be determined by how many dogs may be existing on the spaces at this time? So if you have two dogs, we're not going to tell you, you can only have one, or you have to get rid of one?
I think generally, we leave that kind of up to a discretion between the property site manager and the county, who best knows, you know, what kind of animals are in the neighborhood and/or what people are, who's moving in, what animal.
So it leaves another, another level of flexibility. Okay, great. Yeah, so I really thank you. I think the rest of them, the rest of the documents are well done, and if we, once we get these into action, we see any changes that need to be made, we can address them as they come along, if they do. So thank you for answering my questions.
Other questions? I have two, I guess related to the cabin leases and the attachment B with the roster of tenants. I noticed that there's different prices being charged, and I wonder why that is. That's my first question.
I, I know that the Phillips 54, I don't know the answer to that. I'm wondering if they've been there longer. It's a very small cabin, it's smaller than the others. And I know that cabin number 53 states that it's vacant, and I just filled that last week for a two-and-a-half month rental. And then the intent is that in the spring or summer is to demo that cabin, because it is in pretty bad shape. And it helps us plan for our future development, but we thought we would go ahead and, and do that with, on a temporary basis.
Okay.
Philip, do you know the answer to that one?
Yeah.
I don't have the list in front of me, but one of the cabins is really a space lease, because they own the cabin, the people that are living there, and they are, so they would be on, at the same rate as the trailer leases. So that's, it's an odd one. So they were, the individuals there were sold the cabin, but they're not sold the land. John, you want to give any info there?
No, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense. And then my second question is related to, I guess, the notice provisions, and Patty called some of that out, so I'm wondering if I missed something, but like, I'm looking at the language other, the right to increase rent. It says, "The parties agree the park owner reserves the right to increase the tenant's rent upon 60 days' written notice mailed to or posted on the subject mobile home." And I just don't know if we need to spell that out more, you know, like mailed to what address, you know? Or if there's additional noticing provisions somewhere, you know, or is it certified mail? I mean, what is, when does 60 days start, you know, when do? There's active discussion about tenants' rights in mobile homes, and so I just want to honor that we are, you know, extending, extending those rights and giving the best notice as possible. So, my question, is there other noticing things that I missed, or do we need to spell that out more clearly?
Well, we could increase the notice provision, no, no problem.
Okay. Just to clarify it.
Are you looking at item, or number 51 on page 11?
I was on page three, I think, but I'll go scroll down further. Right to increase rent is where I was pulling out the noticing. So where are you, on page 11?
Down to the action, I was going to say to Jody.
That's the notice provision, yeah.
Let me just double check that.
Yeah, I guess.
Where it does address the certified mail or pre-postage.
Okay. So, yeah, I guess maybe just refer down to this, or bring the language up to, because they're different, right? Like it's, for the increase to rent, it sounds like you can post that on, on the home, which isn't included under the, these other noticing provisions. So I'm just unclear about what the expectation is.
Well, we can put a clarifying label in there. I guess I was assuming you were looking at the notice provision. Kelly, do you have any suggestions or requests regarding that paragraph?
No, I think that's fine. I mean, maybe, yeah. Hand delivery, is it hand delivery to a 15-year-old, or hand delivery to the tenant on the lease?
That 15-year-old's coming in there somewhere.
I just want to be clear, you know, increases to people's rent is important for them to know, how they're going to know if that decision is made.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
What we can do is bring that as a correction back for the second reading.
Perfect. Any other discussion or questions on these?
Yeah, Kelly?
Yes, Greg. Sorry, your video went away.
I, I got cut off, and I'm trying to come back.
Now you're crooked.
Just wondering about, I know, am I sideways or something?
Yeah, you are.
Sorry. Anyway, the question was, when we set the rates for, for the spaces or spaces, are, do you look at, and can you provide us with comparisons, just what, what space rents are looking like in the valley, so we have a sense of, of what we're offering in terms of pricing as compared to what else is available in the valley for mobile home lots?
I can, I can work on that and insert it into the agenda item summary for information for you, yeah.
That'd be great, just for comparison, so we know what, you know, what we're offering in a way of subsidy to the community, and, you know, to the tenants there. Because I think it's significant, and that should be, you know, something we all understand. Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, seeing?
I'll make a motion?
Yeah, we'll take them separate. Go ahead, Patty, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners approving space leases, space leases at the Phillips Mobile Home Park. This is first reading, set for second reading, public hearing on March the 10th.
Action.
Thank you, Steve. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 And now I will make a motion to approve the ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners approving leases for cabins at the Phillips Mobile Home Park. First reading, set for second reading, public hearing on March the 10th. second reading, public hearing on March the 10th.
Third?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Thanks, Jody. Moving on to item number seven, under individual consideration items, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners approving the cancellation of certain uncollectible taxes levied on personal property, including but not limited to mobile homes in Picken County. And is our finance director, is Ann here, or will someone else be presenting this for her?
Yes, Ann is here, joining me by phone.
Oh, great. Hi, Ann.
Hello. Hi, my apologies for not joining you on this, on the Zoom meeting, but I had technical difficulties, and so I'm here on the phone. My name is Andrea Guss, Finance Director, Treasurer, and Public Trustee. I'm presenting to you today in my capacity as Treasurer, essentially requesting the cancellation of certain property taxes that are uncollectible. Under state statute, the BFCC has sole authority to cancel property taxes. These are property taxes that we have diligently attempted to collect, that were outstanding on February 12th of this year, in an amount of $984.20. There is no impact to the budget by canceling these taxes as they are for future, sorry, for past years. And in any case, the majority of the, the taxes would have been distributed to other entities, spread between a, a number of districts and municipalities. So the, I believe there is a list of the taxes that we're requesting to be canceled. I'm just trying to pull it up. I have a technical difficulty. Okay, it's in the resolution. One, one in the amount of, I'm sorry, I can't, my screen is all truncated.
That's okay. Ann, I can read it for you.
Thank you.
No problem. So in the resolution, there, it looks like two line items for tax, taxes, the first being for the Webster Melanie A. Living Trust, in the amount of $196.08 from years 2007, 2008, and 2009. And it says the, the reason for canceling these uncollectible taxes are that the previous owners never paid. And the second being the Snowmass Gas and Deli, in the amount of $788.12 from years 2015 and 2018. The reason for cancellation offered as out of business, and these taxes were never paid during those years.
Thank you. So my request is that you move this to a second hearing, I believe on March 10th for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ann? Steve?
Ann, this is for personal property. And in the case of Melanie Webster, would that be for a, a mobile home?
Uh, I'm, I would have to check. I would have to check and find out for you.
Okay. If it, if it were the case of real property, that would be a situation where someone else could pay the tax lien, wouldn't, wouldn't that be true, and potentially gain ownership of the property? So for the personal property, it's just for, in the case of Delhi, was maybe kitchen equipment, or, you know, stoves and whatever, those kind of things, perhaps? Is that correct?
Yeah, cor- correct, yeah.
And if it was a real property, the county would, rather than canceling the property tax debt, we would take ownership of the property, if it were real property. Am I correct there?
That, that is one option.
Okay.
But it, it's not something that we prefer to do. Our primary goal is to get someone to pay the tax.
Okay, and then just one other comment. The, the new business at the Snowmass Conoco is doing a really good business. The owner is the owner of Tempur Neo Restaurant, and he's also the, you know, the head chef, so it's becoming very popular. And I think, I mean, we're losing some property tax revenue, but I think we're going to gain a lot of sales tax revenue from that location, which granted, it goes to different entities, but it's still, I think it's a better operation there now than, than the one that we're dealing with here today, not paying their property tax.
I can confirm that Cuban pork sandwich is very good.
Well, thank you. Any further questions about this request to cancel uncollectible personal property tax? Okay, seeing none, I'll look for a motion. Steve?
I'll make a motion to approve on first reading, set for second reading on March 10th, the resolution of the Board of County Commissioners approving the cancellation of certain uncollectible taxes levied on personal property.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Francie. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you, Ann. Nice to hear you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners on behalf of the Picken County Sheriff's Office, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Aspen Valley Hospital for preparation of meals for the Picken County Jail. And I know we have several folks on, and I see our jail commandant, Kim Valerio. How are you?
Good, pretty good.
Doing well, thank you.
Good. Thanks for having me on. Good, I guess, good afternoon, everyone. I'm here to present, or ask you to approve an agreement with the Aspen Valley Hospital to continue to provide meals for inmates. We don't have a, a facility to make our own meals, so we have to contract with someone else. And Aspen Valley Hospital has done that for years, and is interested in continuing that as well for us. Even though, you know, if we get approved to move inmates to Garfield, we'll still need to provide those nutritional meals for the inmates while in, in holding. So they provide very good meals, very nutritional, and following all those guidelines. So I'm asking you to, to approve that and set it for second reading on March 10th.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Kim? Greg?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Kim. Nice to see you. Could you explain that again? Did you say if, I wasn't sure I heard it right, but would they still be providing meals if for the, our jail inmates that are in Garfield? Is that what you said?
No, just for the inmates that would be here during, before they go to court, that type of thing. So, yeah, no.
Got it. Okay, yeah, I was thinking, wait, that sounds like a lot of logistical, you know, a trowel. Okay, just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Sorry for the confusion.
Patty?
Yeah, and it's my understanding the, this intergovernment agreement will be flexible on that number based on the, the number of detainees that are being held here. The other thing, and I'm going to point this one at Ry Neely, it says this document needs to be updated before second reading. So there's just some issues we're going to clarify before second reading. Is that correct, Ry?
Yeah, the, the form of the actual IGA that we received is from Aspen Valley Hospital, and it just doesn't have some of our standard, standard contract provisions in it that we include in all of our IGAs. And I'll work with Kim to get that updated before second reading. When I looked at, at the end of last week, I thought getting first reading would probably be good to get out of the way, based on the substantive terms of the IGA. And I can clean up that form stuff. We've done IGAs in the past at the hospital, so it shouldn't be an issue, I would say.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ry. Steve, you have a question?
Same question.
And then I guess I have two questions. One, just having to do with the form of the IGA. Section 18, related to worker status, it doesn't seem like anything I've seen in our IGAs before, so it just seemed really kind of out of place to me. And I'm not sure we would need to include that, but.
Yeah, so our current, well, most of our contractual agreements do have some, some reference to the statutory requirement to have some kind of verification as to worker status, really citizenship or naturalization or something like that, Kelly. And we have finessed that language in the past, and that's one of the things that I would pull out of our current IGA form and put into this one to better harmonize it, but where generally I understand our position on that is.
Thank you. And then substantively, I'm wondering, how do we accommodate food allergies or health, dietary health restrictions? Do we need to spell that out here?
Thank you. And I apologize for the, I actually didn't rewrite this. I did copy it from a, from the agreement. So, so I apologize for those. But yes, food allergies, ABH is great for any type of that type of thing, and have always accommodated and are able to meet all of those needs. So those dietary and medical and allergies, all of that, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Kim or Ry, or discussion on the topic? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I'll look for a motion from the board, please.
I'll move to approve this resolution, approving the IGA with Aspen Valley Hospital for preparation of meals for Picken County Jail. This is first reading, set for second reading on March 10th.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great.
Aye.
Thank you all. Thank you, Kim and Ry. And we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Moving on to individual consideration items, public hearings and second readings. Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the Colorado Department of State Electronic Recording Technology, I think that's supposed to say Board Grant Award. And I think we have our recording department director, Ingrid Gruder, here.
Yes. Now, you can't see me, but I am here. So as you said, this is regarding resolution authorized the Electronic Recording Technology Board Grant. It's in the amount of $36,535. This is for the second phase of contracting or indexing of our historical documents. This would take us from 1949 back to 1881, and everything would then be searchable online. And the, what else? From, from last time. I think that, that's really about it, unless there are some questions.
Okay. Before I open the public hearing, are there any questions for Ingrid? Okay, I'm seeing none. This is a public hearing. On this resolution, I will open up the public hearing, and we'll give it a little bit for folks to call in and comment, since there is a lag between the room and what people see at home. Let's see. I see Tracy Kraus on the line. Do you wish to comment on this grant, the Electronic Recording Technology Grant? Tracy, you can unmute by star six. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else call in or hearing interest to comment on this item, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and bring it back to the board for any discussion. Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move to the resolution authorizing the Colorado Department of State Electronic Recording Technology Board Grant Award. I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ingrid.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 10, in ordinance of the BFCC approving the conveyance of 109 Basalt Mountain Drive, Carbondale, and the purchase of 200 Lakeside Drive, Basalt, and authorizing the execution of the necessary documents. This is a second reading and public hearing, and hi, Rich Engelhardt, to present this.
Hi, Chair, Board members. Rich Engelhardt, Deputy County Manager. This is, what you have in front of you is the second reading, and it's, I've already mentioned, a public hearing. Funded ordinance conveying 109 Basalt Mountain Drive, Carbondale, and the purchase of 200 Lakeside Drive in Basalt, for Picken County Employee Housing Inventory, and authorizing the execution of the necessary documents. A little background, as we went over in our first meeting on this, is that the property of 109 Basalt Mountain was de-restricted, owned in part by a county employee who has left employment. As part of that agreement, we end up deciding whether we want to keep the house, because we have versed right to refuse on those, or put those back on the market. It was decided to put it back on to the market. During that time, we had an offer on the property, and it happened to be from a buyer that was located at 200 Lakeside, Basalt. In consultation with county manager, we elected to take a look at that and see if it's, if we could do a, somewhat a, kind of a trade. We buy theirs, they buy ours, keep a house in our housing stock for employees, and that has worked out. We are still in the middle of wrapping up the due diligence, and I've got Jody on here that's been working with Sally Sheikman, who has been working on the transaction. Since the first reading, there has been a lot of work done on both places regarding the inspection reports. A number of items came up at both, both places, nothing major. But as you know, in these transactions, things like this happen. It really is boiling down to a number of items that we'll, we'll repair ourselves on our old place, or the one that we still hold, and the owners are going to be repairing some of their items. And it really looks like it's going to be a difference of right at about $2,800 that will go as a credit towards our buyers. So in essence, about $2,800 difference that we'll be paying out on that. I, I'll let Jody speak to this a little bit more, as she's been heavily involved in that. And again, I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate Jody's involvement on our housing program and, and looking at it from that aspect. So Jody, do you want to make a couple of comments on that?
Sure. Yeah, being on site and, and walking through on the inspections, we didn't find any really big issues. I, I think that just the, it was mostly the roofing and the drainage for the Basalt Mountain. So just to kind of give you a perspective of some of the costs that the county will incur, the purchase price is balanced out, as, as Rich said, but it turns out that we're going to spend about $6,000 to make some of the upgrades on the purchase of Lakeside, 200 Lakeside. And then before- purchase of Lakeside, 200 Lakeside. And then before the closing of the 109 Basalt Mountain Drive, I am making some corrections, which is all life safety, which we would be required to do, like radon mitigation and some of the roofing stuff. And that's ultimately, again, it costs the housing program about $11,000 to make those fixes. And we can certainly absorb that in the purchase. And I already have all the trades scheduled, so it'll all be done here at the end of next week. And we can, they can move in whenever the closing happens. And I think we have a really nice unit for our inventory for future housing for our employees at Lakeside. And that's all I have.
Good. Thank you, Jody. And board, if there's any other questions, we still, Steve, you had mentioned last time we talked about the appraisals. We just couldn't get those done in time. The time between the first and second reading, I just didn't allow for those. That's the lingering, only unknowns out there, but we feel confident that both units were priced accordingly, so we should be okay there.
Okay, there are any...
So with that, Kelly, I'll just turn it back to you.
Thank you. Any questions for Rich or Jody? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I will open this up for the public hearing for comment. Public is able to call in if you want to comment on these property transactions related to 200 Lakeside Drive in Basalt and 109 Basalt Mountain Drive in Carbondale. Again, I see, we have Tracy Kraus here who's joined us from the public. I don't know which item she wishes to speak or participate on, so I want to check in and see. Tracy, do you have public comment on these contracts? We'll just give it a few more seconds if any members of the public wish to call in. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone join us for public comment on this item. Accordingly, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion. You guys are sprite today.
Well, I'm just waiting for the rest of the board. It's usually me making the motion, so come on, guys.
I'll move, I'll move that we approve the ordinance approving the conveyance of 109 Basalt Mountain Drive, Carbondale, and the purchase of 200 Lakeside Drive, Basalt, and authorizing the execution of the necessary documents.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Greg moved, Francie second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, oh, Francie, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say again to Rich and Jody that I just think this is such a great program, that you found these houses and it worked out so well. And now we have this great new house in our inventory. So congratulations, job well done there.
Agreed, Francie.
Steve, did you have other comment?
Thank you all, board. And again, your continued support, we really do appreciate it on the employee housing side. So thank you for that.
And Steve, I had seen your hand, so go ahead.
I had to say a comment, really. Thank you.
All right, I will call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Rich. Moving on to item number 11, an ordinance accepting development covenants approved by the Community Development Director from January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020, in connection with land use development approvals pursuant to ordinance 32 to 17, 2017. And I see Suzanne. Hi, Suzanne.
Hello, everybody. Nice to see you all. This is second reading. I'll be pretty quick. I think as you know, we, I signed, or Ry and I signed covenants through the year, and then we bring them to you for acceptance annually, rather than having to bring each one to you individually. So what we're doing for last year, I think there were on our list, I think, eight different covenants that we do in association with various land use actions. And so we're just asking for your approval to accept those.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Suzanne? Okay, I'm not seeing any. This is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open up the public hearing again for members of the public. There's a little bit of a lag between the room and the TV at home. So you're welcome to call in and comment on the ordinance accepting development covenants approved by the Community Development Director for the year of 2020. And we will give it a few minutes here. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone join us for public comment, so I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Well, I'd be glad to make a motion approving the ordinance accepting development covenants from January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Thank you, Suzanne.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, cruising along here to the next section of our individual consideration items, emergency ordinance, and a resolution confirmatory reading. Item number 12 is our emergency resolution of the BOCC authorizing submittal of a grant application to the State of Colorado Department of Local Affairs Energy and Mineral Impact Assistant Funds for the Roaring Fork Middle Mile Fiber Project, and if approved, authorizing acceptance of the grant. And I see our staff, Jeff Kruger here. Hi, Jeff.
Hey. Hey, thanks, Kelly. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jeff Kruger. I'm the telecommunications manager for Pickens County. And this is a confirmatory hearing for an emergency resolution to submit a grant to DOLA for the Roaring Fork Valley Broadband Middle Mile Fiber Project, and to accept that grant if awarded. To provide you a little bit of background again, the grant is actually a collaboration between Pickens County, City of Aspen, the town of Snowmass Village, and the town of Basalt, that will build on a Holy Cross Energy Fiber Initiative that's going to run fiber all the way from Glenwood Springs to Aspen. And the entire grant itself is $1.6 million. Of that, 600K is allocated to Pickens County. Of that 600K, we would be responsible for a 50% match, or 300K of the total. Of that 300K, there's some recurring costs, as well as some non-recurring costs. The recurring costs are for a fiber lease for 80 gig of bandwidth, and in the amount of $14,000 per year, or roughly $1,200 per month. And I think I said this last time, but really to put that into perspective, we are currently paying over $5,000 a month now for a CenturyLink circuit, which also goes from Glenwood to Aspen, which is 10 gig in bandwidth. So this is eight times the bandwidth at about a quarter of the cost. There's also some recurring costs, excuse me, non-recurring costs for capital improvements. Those amount to about 160 gig. As far as budgetary impact, the recurring costs have been budgeted. The non-recurring costs will require supplemental. We do plan to go before the board for the first quarter of '21 supplemental request, which will be next week, March 2nd, in a work session. As far as the strategic plan goes, broadband really touches just about everything in the strategic plan. And that's why you'll see on the resolution itself, there are so many items that broadband can impact or provide a positive impact for county goals. Really, that's all I have. I believe there's requires public comment and open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff? Steve?
Jeff, is it possible for someone who lives along the Holy Cross line to privately get a contract with, for fiber going to their house or into their subdivision?
That's certainly possible with Holy Cross Energy if they elect to do that going forward, or if they elect to, you know, lease fiber to internet service provider and ISP. That's certainly up to Holy Cross. They're going to be running 144 strands up the valley. And this initiative, the focus of this initiative is really primarily for their 100 by 30 program, which is to be 100% renewables by the year 2030. In order to do that, they need all of their grid infrastructure connected with high-speed fiber. So that's their number one goal. The secondary goals, I'm sure, are to lease fiber and potentially work with some ISPs to deliver services.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think it's really neat that they are doing part of it to connect the school kids, so they can do virtual learning in the Elgabelle area. A lot of lower income families will have access to getting their kids better connected to the school.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Steve. Francie, and then Patty.
Hi, Jeff. I think I asked you the last time you were with us, if it's going to be extended up to Carbondale, and I can't remember what the timetable was or the plan on that. Would you refresh my memory?
So Carbondale is not part of the initiative, the town of Carbondale, but the, we've actually designed the circuit going up the valley such that other MEATI centers, so right now the plan is to really do the upper valley, which would be the Basalt MEATI Center, the town of Snowmass Village MEATI Center, and the city of Aspen MEATI Centers. But the circuit is designed such that we could add MEATI centers in the future. So if the town of Carbondale wanted to participate, or even potentially Elgabelle or Willets to participate, so this could be, you know, Eagle County, or Garfield County for that matter, the option is certainly out there in the future.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Patty? So Jeff, I have a feeling when you come back before us for supplementary, you'll provide more information. So I just want to make sure that part of that, with the 162,000 plus that you're going to be asking, which budget that's coming from, and if it's being borrowed from the general fund, et cetera, whatever the plan is, you can just bring that back next week, just, which you probably already have included in your packet, so.
Yeah, it is included in the package, Patty, and we'll be presenting all those numbers to you next week.
Perfect. Thank you, Jeff.
Any other questions for Jeff before I open the public hearing? Okay, I will open this up for public hearing if members of the public wish to comment on this emergency resolution. This is a confirmatory hearing regarding a submittal of a grant application to DOLA Energy Mineral Impact Assistant Funds for the Roaring Fork Middle Mile Fiber Project, and if approved, authorizing acceptance of the grant. I see no one's called in so far. We'll give it a few seconds here. Okay, not seeing anyone else call in to comment on this. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion, please. Steve?
I do have a little more question. Jeff, are we going to continue the CenturyLink fiber connection, so we'll have redundancy in the system?
Yeah, we're going to actually, that's a great question, Steve. So there's actually two circuits right now that are providing county internet, one from CenturyLink, one from Comcast. We'll be eliminating one of those two. Not sure which one yet, but we will be eliminating one of those two. So the overall impact will be a cost savings.
Okay, any other discussion? Greg?
I'm ready to make a motion to approve the emergency resolution authorizing submittal of a grant application to the State of Colorado Department of Local Affairs Energy and Mineral Impact Assistance Funds for the Roaring Fork Middle Mile Fiber Project, and if approved, authorizing acceptance of the grant.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Francie. Okay. Our energy is pretty low, but this is, I still think, a really exciting grant. I think very transformative.
Yes.
I'll call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. We'll see you next week.
Thank you, everyone. Good day.
You too. Okay, moving on to the item that we added to our agenda, item 12B. And let me pull it up so I can read it correctly. So we are calling this an emergency resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Pickens County, Colorado, on behalf of the Pickens County Sheriff's Office, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Aspen Valley Hospital for preparation of meals. That's not right.
It's not on our agenda. It's on a special email from Ry.
No, I know. But I don't, I think the resolution just has the wrong, we have to amend it anyway. So we need to make sure we amend this title. So sorry, the item that we are talking about is the IGA between the Board of County Commissioners of Garfield County, Colorado, and the Board of County Commissioners of Pickens County, Colorado, regarding the housing of Pickens County detainees at the Garfield County Jail. So this will be an emergency resolution. This is the first reading, and I believe we will have confirmatory reading on March 10th. So with that, I'm not sure, should I turn this over to you, Sheriff DeSalvo, to present?
You can, but I think it's better coming from Ry, if available. Ry, are you ready to?
Yeah, Joe, I can get started. First, Kelly, right, I sent over the version that still was part of the Aspen Valley Hospital agreement. So I'll get the right version to Jeanette today, and then make sure the right one's there for confirmatory reading. I'll change the title as well.
Thank you.
So it is an emergency resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Pickens County, Colorado. Should read, on behalf of the Pickens County Sheriff's Office, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of Garfield County, providing for the housing of Pickens County inmates in the Garfield County Jail. That should be the proper title, and I'll make sure that gets to Jeanette as I said. As far as the background for the need for this to be an emergency ordinance and the other aspects of this IGA, I think Joe, and Alex, and Kim probably have more information on why we need to do this as an emergency ordinance, and the circumstances that have led to the desire to enter into an agreement with Garfield County for this service. If you look at the IGA itself, it sets forth the terms at which Pickens County detainees will be housed in Garfield County, in the Garfield County Jail. And it sets forth the daily rate at which that is to be accomplished. There are various provisions regarding discretion of the Garfield County Sheriff to accept detainees from Pickens County, and requirements for us to receive those detainees back and requirements for us to receive those detainees back into our custody should Garfield County no longer be willing to house a detainee. I would note, and I confirmed this with Kim and Alex the other day, I believe we still have the ability to house some detainees in Park County in the event Garfield County is not able to house a detainee, a Picken County detainee, and we are not able to house that detainee. That is pursuant to a separate contractual relationship that we've had with Park County for some time. Other than that, I think I'll turn it over to somebody from the Sheriff's Office. I did say that I'd provide the language from the Home Rule Charter regarding emergency resolution. And what it says, we just have to identify the basis for it being an emergency resolution. So basically, the emergency circumstance. As I said before, it looks like Sheriff DeSalvo's got his hand up here, but I'll leave that to these guys to define, and we can do that in this resolution. We'll need to include a further amendment with a final paragraph that states the emergency basis for doing it as an emergency resolution. Also, we will need to set a confirmatory hearing for it. Don't think we need to define when that'll be, but probably with noting we'll be looking at the first meeting in March instead of, well, maybe not. Maybe the second meeting in March, but I can confirm that, Jeanette.
Thank you very much, Ry. That's clear for me. Any questions for Ry right now before we go back to the Sheriff's Office? Okay. Sheriff DeSalvo?
Thank you, Commissioners. I guess to answer Ry's question, or I guess what we need to establish is the why. I think that's what I'm understanding, Kelly, is why the need for the emergency ordinance. I think the historical background on this is these conversations started with Garfield County, I believe, in late October or November. And since that time, we've had quite a few dangerous situations in the jail. I think all could have been prevented if the facility was in better shape. What I think brought this to a head for all of us is the most recent incident we had with a deputy, and frankly, I just can't afford to wait. Actually, we can't afford to wait any longer. I think that's the basis for the emergency. The deputy that was assaulted in the last few weeks actually may be more serious than we originally thought her injuries could be. So I guess the long and the short of it is, I don't think we could afford any more incidents at our jail. So that's the reason for the emergency part of this. I'm very satisfied with the contract. I know Ry had mentioned Park County. They're not accepting inmates anymore, so our options are getting more limited because we probably would have sent some of these people to Park County and limited what we were going to send to Garfield County, but they're not taking inmates anymore. And I don't know if that's a COVID thing or a staffing thing. So I've got to tell you, I think we're fortunate to find a jail that will take our inmates. The other highlight on this contract I think the board needs to be well aware of is that it is a contract we met in October or November. We met with both Sheriff Valerio, the county attorney, and the operations commander for the jail. And they wanted to stress that there needs to be a sunset on this, that they're not going to hold our inmates perpetually. So I think the contract, Ry, is three years. But I think in that three-year period, Commissioners, I think Garfield County would like to see some movement on our end towards mitigating the current situation. So Kelly, I hope that answers the questions. If not, I could go on with more of the same.
Let's check in with the board for questions. I see Francie's hand, and then I have a question as well. And then Steve. Francie, go ahead.
Oh, this is a question for Joey. So Joey, if we execute this contract right away, does that mean that all of the prisoners go to Garfield, no matter what their offense is, or their age, or their gender, or does everybody go automatically?
Francie, we would hold inmates here for a 24-hour period, and those are people that would either be waiting to see a judge for an advisement or possibly bonding out. So in a 24- to 48-hour period, we would take every inmate that was going to be here for longer than that would become Garfield County inmates.
Okay.
And Francie, just for you to know that the majority of the prisoners in our jail are pretrial, meaning they're not convicted, they're just waiting for their turn in court. So that's the majority of our inmates. Very little are sentenced inmates.
And so the people who are awaiting trial would be awaiting it in Garfield County?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Francie. Steve?
So tagging on to that thought, when a person has a court appearance, some of those might be at the Garfield Courthouse, some might be at Picken County Courthouse. Would they be able to do a video conference with the judge? If it's at the Garfield Courthouse, would one of our deputies have to go down there and then escort them into the Garfield Courthouse, or would someone from Garfield County do that?
Yeah, Steve, I say this somewhat tongue-in-cheek, that as far as the inmates that need to appear in Picken County Court Live, we would probably have our deputies be Uber drivers, basically, transporting inmates back and forth. That may be a couple of times a day, for all we know. Garfield County does have a sophisticated video court system that we're trying to tap into and use. I think our judges up here are very open to that right now. I've got to work with the DA's office to see how that works. But we'll do as much by video as possible. But there are people who need to meet with their attorneys, and they might want to do that in person right before a court appearance, so we may have to drive them up. And that's all part of the plan that Kim has fleshed out for us. But there's going to be a lot of driving.
Okay, and if they are driving and then hit the bottleneck in the traffic situation at the Aspen Airport coming into town, can Sheriff's deputies bypass that by going in the right-hand lane?
Yes, that would be considered an emergency vehicle, and we could use the bus lane if possible.
Okay, because I'd hate to have our deputy sitting in that traffic line with, you know, trying to get somebody to a court date and...
Yeah, I think what we would do, Steve, and I'm not sure this is fleshed out in Kim's plan yet, but I believe it is. If we have an inmate in Garfield County that needs to have an appearance at 8:30 in the morning, that inmate probably will be brought up the night before and would be housed in one of our two holding cells, which would be really the only functional part of the jail, is these two holding cells that we have. So to avoid an ice storm, or winter weather, or traffic, or whatever, we'd probably bring that inmate up the night before. Okay, thanks, Joey.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Patty?
Yeah, the document does say a two-year timeframe with a two-year renewal after that. So I thought we were going to go for three with a renewal, so I just wanted to clarify that because it's always been under our understanding... I don't have a problem with the date to expire so that we're not doing this in perpetuity, but I just think we need to clarify that. Is it two years, and then we have to re-figure it, or is it three, and then?
Patty, I'm fine with two years and then renewing it. I like to be optimistic that within two years, we will have a path. And that is all Garfield County is asking for, to see that we're moving forward. And I think in next week or the next few weeks, the board is going to hear from WALD, which is our jail consulting company. And I think even that movement is satisfying Garfield County at this point.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with kind of giving us a little push to get things done at the jail sooner, so. Okay, just wanted to make sure we're all clear. Thanks, Joey.
Okay, there. Any further questions? From folks? I did have a question regarding the very specifics of the language that I perused in our last 10 minutes of the lunch hour on page 12, I think. Let me just pull it up. No, sorry, page 5, item D. And please have patience with me while I find that again. On the IGA, I'm referring to... I'm just curious where it says, "Picken County detainees shall not be granted furloughs or leaves and shall not be assigned to work outside the Garfield Jail without prior written consent of the Garfield County Sheriff and so ordered by a court of competent jurisdiction." Would that be related to like a work release program? That if a Picken County judge orders the work release, the Garfield County Sheriff has to be willing to accommodate that? Good question.
Yeah, Kelly, I don't know. I'm sorry, Kelly, maybe Kim could help us out. Garfield County does not have the same structured work release that we do. They've got a different program. It's called WorkEnders. And maybe Kim could explain that a little better than I can, but there will not be a formal work release like we have now where somebody goes out to work for eight, 10, 12 hours a day, checks themselves back in, and then sleeps in our jail. With the WorkEnders program, Kim, I think they work and then they're released, they stay at their own home. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct, Joe.
So it'll be a work release, but a significantly different form of work release.
And are those programs happening now anyway with COVID precautions?
No.
No.
I don't know about the WorkEnders there, but our work release here is closed right now because of COVID, so.
Right, okay.
And I think, and Ry may be able to talk about this a little bit better than me or Joe, but I think since Garfield doesn't have a work release, I think they're not allowing us to sentence them to work release and require Garfield to provide work release.
Patty has a follow-up question.
Yeah, but does that mean that if we have somebody who's quote-unquote "assigned to work release" up here, and since we don't have it here and you don't have it, you know, it's not down in Glenwood, could we then ask the judge then to put them into the WorkEnders program so they'd still be... I think it's important for people, you know, when possible, to maintain their jobs because then, when they're released, or whatever happens in the next phase of their life, they still have employment, which is huge for people when they're released from serving time. So if we could, see if we can work that into with the court system up here, the justice system, to allow the WorkEnders program to work for our detainees. This is a good question Kelly brought up, and I think it's an important part of allowing detainees to return to life.
Patty, I couldn't agree more, but right now, I don't know of many jails who are doing any form of work release or WorkEnders. So, or now, and I would say the immediate future, I don't think there's an issue because no one's doing it.
So Garfield County currently is not doing their WorkEnders program?
No.
Okay.
Or Kim said, I don't know, but...
I don't know.
Can we just clarify that for a second reading?
Yeah, there's also another, probably an unforeseen problem that I just thought of, is if we have a Picken County inmate sentenced to work release, and they are working at the Hotel Jerome, for example, we may have to monitor their WorkEnder and not Garfield County, which is fine. We do that often. If you're on work release, chances are sometime during the week, you'll get a visit from a deputy seeing that you are at work and not at your girlfriend's place. So we would probably have to come up with a plan which won't be hard to monitor their WorkEnders in Picken County.
I think that's something I think we should look into for second reading. I think that's a valuable part of our system. Thank you.
I would add to that, that the Sheriff's Office doesn't run the WorkEnders program. I don't even know if that maybe is probation, or... I do know that that's not run through the Sheriff's Office.
Patty, I think it's important to note that the form of work release that we have is pretty unique. Not a lot of Sheriff's Office run work release through their jail. It's usually done through probation, or, as Kim said, something like... WorkEnders is not a Sheriff's Office program. So what we have is unique, and this is a product of where we are. This might just have to be on hold for a little while.
Well, let's just see what we might be able to come up with. I think that would be worth the effort, so thank you.
And I would note, the language seems permissive in the IGA. It doesn't say that it can't happen. It does say the Garfield County Sheriff would have to agree to facilitate it. Greg?
Yeah, hi. Hi, Joey. I don't have my full screen. I know Kim's there, too. I just want to make sure we're... We do have a time limit as specified in the contract with the Garfield Sheriff. Do we have key results and dates that we're looking at as to move forward to meet the terms of this contract and get us toward establishing this jail program we have, whatever shape it's going to be in? I know it's at the highest priority according to our board retreat. And so I want to just make sure that we have a plan and that we're moving forward, and what does that mean?
Well, Greg, thanks for the reminder. I forgot to say thank you all because John Peacock did tell me that at your retreat, you did put this high on your priority behind COVID, which clearly is the more dominant problem. I think we are further ahead than we think we are in the process of figuring out what to do as next steps with the jail. Just the fact that we've been working with WALD for some time now. You know, this is very similar to what some of us went through, and I think maybe John is maybe the only one, when we went through the process of building this building. And we were meeting with consultants and architects and, you know, what's best served for us. So we've been at that for, I would guess, eight months, or six months to eight months with WALD, maybe longer, where we've already started to dive into this. And I think you're going to get a pretty comprehensive presentation on what the needs of the jail and possible costs might be. I think mid-March is when we're in front of you. So I think you'll be happily surprised that we're making a pretty good dent in the problem right now. As always, currency plays into this, how we're going to pay for it. And I think that's where you guys come in. But our assessment of the jail and what needs to be done is we're pretty deep into it right now. And if Joey Smith was still on, I think she could fill you in more. She works directly with them in the facility, but I could speak for the Sheriff's Office. I'm happy with WALD. I think they are doing an incredible job, and they fully have a great understanding of the problem.
Good to hear.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, I'll just offer what I see as a little bit of a context. You know, just even the discussion around the work release programs reflects a bit of a difference in how Garfield County and Picken County think about our justice programs. And, you know, so I am eager to keep moving forward on how we best serve our population that fits with our philosophies for community policing and detention. And I agree with Joe that I think that we are making progress towards that, you know, punctuated by the board's commitment to it this year and elevating that commitment this year. And I'll just remind, you know, some of the initial conversation, we were presented with, you know, a $3.1 million price tag to do the necessary improvements to the jail. You know, 1.6 million... You know, 1.6 million of that was like, this would have to happen for just basic safety and, and of inmates and staff. Um, and so, you know, just keeping that in mind of, these are, this isn't just a philosophical conversation. It's a resource allocation conversation and the, addressing the real liabilities that exist for us. But I also just want to be conscious that we're not, we're not trading, you know, that, what are our realistic expectations here too? Because we have liabilities here, but that doesn't mean we're entering into like a no liability situation either. I mean, there are suicides, there are attacks in Garfield County Jail as well. Um, hopefully that will not happen to any of our inmates and, and we are trading up, I would say, is the outcome in entering into this IGA. Um, and limiting, you know, our, our liability to a greater extent than we're able to in our own facility currently. Um, but I'm anxious to learning more about this whole topic and looking forward to spending more time with all of you on this topic. Um, and I just want to give Alex Bertetta a shout out. Good to see you here. I know we'll be hearing from you more. You've been quiet today, but nice to see you. So, um, with that, I will look for a motion. I have one more question. Oh, sorry.
Excuse me, Kelly. I'm sorry. If I could just add one more thing to that before you go back to the board?
Sure.
Oh, thank you. Um, I, I just kind of want to make a statement that I'm very conscious of how our inmates are treated. Very conscious. And I would not be sending inmates to any place that I thought was any worse than where they are right now. And I feel the need to defend the Garfield County Jail because I think I'm one of the only ones um, in the administrative staff that's been there. And I would love for you to see it, but I would not recommend it right now with a COVID environment. Um, the Garfield County Jail is an excellent facility that is, um, probably has probably three times the amount of programming that we have for our own inmates. Um, it is not the best deal that it has been labeled. And I have to say that, uh, I've, I've heard grumbling about lawsuits and et cetera. That's not true. There are no current lawsuits with, with the ACLU or any other, any other, um, uh, agency like that down there. I would not send my friends and family to a jail that I thought was substandard. Um, I just need, I guess I'm asking for that trust from the board that this is not, um, a step down. By far, I think this is a step up for most inmates. Uh, the most, probably the best example I could give you is right now, our jail has outdoor time, which is basically you're in a shoebox and the only thing you see is the sky. Um, at Garfield County, they have, uh, the ability to either be inside or outside, and that's at their own discretion. It truly is a, um, a, a direct supervision jail, which I have to say ours is not any longer. So I think the inmates are actually going to be treated a little better than they are here. A, because they're a direct supervision jail. B, there's more programming. C, there's probably more availability for them to be outside and get fresh air and to exercise. Those are some of the things we just don't have here. So, um, I just wanted to spell that rumor, especially about any ACLU lawsuits. There are none. And, um, you know, I don't know of a sheriff, including myself, right now that's not dealing with a inmate lawsuit. It is part of doing business, and I think Ryan and John would probably agree with that. It's very hard to go a year without a lawsuit from an inmate. So, um, I'm very comfortable with that and, um, I, I'm just asking you to trust me, which I know you do. I would not be putting a friend or family member in a, a steal. So, um, thanks for letting me stand on a soapbox for a few minutes.
No worries. Thank you. Patty and then Greg.
Yeah, um, I, I just would like, and I've mentioned this before, once this goes through and we've actually moved our detainees and this program is working, um, I'd like a report back, either Alex or Joey or Kim, somebody, um, in a, in a periodic timeframe so that we are kept up to speed on issues, successes, non, not so good successes, won't say failures. I, I think the board needs to have that information on a timely, regular basis. So Kelly and I will maybe look at our future agendas and see what we can set up in the future as far as a timeframe. So we give you guys a date certain that we know you'll be coming back to us. Um, just so we're, you know, we, we, we're responsible too for the health and safety and welfare of both our staff and our detainees that are going down there. And, um, we, so we need to be kept in the loop. I would appreciate that.
Thank you. We can work on that. Patty and Greg?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, I, I can say certainly that sounds good and I look forward to reports as they come in. Um, but I also just want to affirm, I certainly do trust you and your, your vision for this, Joey, and I appreciate you having the, uh, ability to see the, a solution to our, our dilemma with our jail. And I, I think it's, it's innovative and it's, it seems to be a, a good thing to be able to, um, have a relationship where we can make an agreement with Garfield County. And so, yes, I do trust you and I want to see it move forward. Thanks.
Thank you for the affirmation. I guess my, my, my question was rhetorical, but thank you, Greg.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Steve?
You're muted, sir.
I don't have my ear muted shirt on, so I forgot. I would like to make a motion to approve an emergency resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Picken County approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Garfield County and the Board of County Commissioners of Picken County regarding the housing of Picken County detainees at the Garfield County Jail. I'll second that.
Thank you. And I'll just note that for second reading, the resolution will include the justifications for the need for an emergency resolution on this. Any further discussion from the board? Patty?
Yeah, I, I would just like, since, um, since this came to us, the copy that we got by email was just that, you know, just not too long ago, and it's pretty lengthy and pretty specific. I'm going to be reviewing it in paper form like I do more carefully. Um, I will move it along now. It does not mean at second reading, I'm not going to have a lot more questions. So, um, just be prepared, folks. Um, and any information about the Work Enders or whatever would be greatly appreciated at second reading.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Francie, I'm not sure I heard you. Are you there?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, okay. Okay, thank you. Great to see you all. Look forward to working.
Thank you all.
More on this, yeah.
Madam Chair, may we take a break before we start land use? Thank you.
Yes, I was going to suggest, um, 10 or 15 minutes.
10, 10 I think will work.
Okay. All right, board, we will take a 10 minute break before we go into, um, land use. And so we'll be back at 2:10. Thank you, grassroots. Okay, welcome back everyone to the Picken County Board of County Commissioners' regular session on Wednesday, February 24th. Um, we are down at our land use item, so we have a land use public hearing, item number 13, regarding a resolution approving a three-year extension of vested rights for, um, Chapparal Aspen Homesteads 1 to 11A and the Chapparal Remote Parcels 1 to 10. And I see, um, staff Suzanne Wolf here to present on this item for us.
Thanks, Kelly. Hello, everybody again. Um, I guess this is one of those where you realize you've been around for a long time. Um, because I am the staff person who dealt with a lot of this back 20 years ago, I guess. Um, and here we are again, and I find it kind of funny that Mike Kramer is also with us, um, representing the applicants for this. Um, because when I went on maternity leave back in 2006, um, I specifically showed Mike the two very important chaperal files and said, anybody ask questions? Here's what you need to know. So here we are, 14 years later. Both working.
I, I listened very carefully while you were maternity leave too.
So anyway, I just, I, you all appreciate this history on that side.
Yeah.
Probably, probably quite a few. So yeah, you go back with me as well.
I do, I do. And welcome to Mikey.
So, um, so yeah, I'll start. I know Mike has a more extensive, um, sort of graphic presentation for you. So, you know, I'll let him show more of the, the pretty pictures. I will pull up a couple of maps and stuff just to orient you. But just initially to, uh, do the basic introduction, um, the request is for a three-year extension of vested rights that's associated with the Chapparal Ranch Settlement Agreement um, that was granted in 2000 by B O T C Resolution 158, 2000. And that was later amended by Resolution 059, 2004. Um, there've been other sort of minor amendments along the way, but those are the two really important resolutions that affect the property. Um, the applicant's also requesting confirmation of the development rights and a minor amendment related to the size of caretaker dwelling limits for the property. Um, and just to note for the record, the application was submitted back on, in October, mid-October, prior to the expiration of the vested rights on February 5th, 2021. Um, this is being considered as an extension of vested rights as opposed to a reinstatement um, due to when the application was submitted. So I'm going to give it a shot to share my screen if I can, and I'll just bring up a couple of maps for you. Anything coming up for you? No?
Yep, we can see.
I got it.
The area. Okay, perfect. All right. I guess, um, it's always very awkward when you can't see what you've brought up. Um, so just, this map just gives you the, the lay of the land, and again, Mike will do this in more detail. But just so you're clear as we're talking, um, the main ranch is, um, 11 parcels. 10 of those are residential parcels, and then there's a common parcel, um, 11A, and the affordable housing lots that were subdivided off of that. Um, but so the main homesteads are zoned RS20 and contain 553 acres and those 11 parcels with the common area. Up above, you have the remote parcels that are, have 371 acres and there are 10 parcels up there. The, uh, the kind of beige area in between is a BLM parcel, um, that is traversed by Discovery Way that continues up from the main ranch. Um, and then those two parcels, the affordable housing parcels are zoned AH. Um, it's two parcels and there are seven units, um, deed restricted units on those parcels. Um, here just a little bit more of a close up of the 10, um, homesteads on Chapparal Ranch as well as the common parcel. You can see Chapparal Drive going up through and then Discovery Way continuing up. Um, and then as you go higher, um, you can see how Discovery Way then goes through those remote parcels and then continues to Forest Service Land beyond. So that just gives you the basic, very basic rundown of all of the properties that are involved, um, in this request. Um, again, I'm going to go, I'm not going to go deep into the background, um, but I will walk through just some of what I think are the important parts to know about, um, the, the settlement agreement and what was the result of that. So in 2000, the settlement agreement was approved following denial of a development application, um, subsequent litigation, and then a resulting, um, district's court order. So that contained the terms and conditions for development of the Chapparal Main Ranch, the remote parcels and, um, the affordable housing. There was an amendment to that in 2004, and that's when the, the vested rights were extended out till 2021. Originally, there was a five-year vested right associated with the settlement agreement, and then that was extended all the way out till, till 2021. Um, at this time, on the main ranch parcel, um, only one residence has been built based on these approvals. There's one currently under construction and two have come in recently for building permits to build the, the principal residences on those parcels. Um, and then up in the remote parcels, um, just one cabin has been built on those properties, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. When we approved.
Can I get some clarification just really quickly? Do you guys mind? I can't find anywhere in the packet where on Woody Creek Road this is, and I don't know where it is. Could you just pretty, give me a general idea of where it is?
Yeah, so Francie, it's when you, um, when you're on Upper River Road, um, right where Upper River, where the Rio Grande Trail and Upper River Road intersect is the main entrance to Chapparal. But then as you wrap around on Woody Creek Road and to Little Woody, basically it's sitting up on the bench above Upper River Road, Woody Creek Road and Little, Little Woody Creek Road.
Okay, so the affordable housing units are those new housing units that you can see?
They're right, yeah, they're right on the, the Grand Trail.
Yeah, oh, the right on the.
Yeah, so they're basically down on the lower bench.
Okay.
They're, they're basically three benches. The affordable housing is down by Upper River Road and, and the Rio Grande Trail. Then there's a second bench, um, where the main, the common facilities are all located and several of the homesteads. And then there's a third bench up higher where the upper homesteads, um, most of the homesteads are located up higher. I think Mike, Mike can give you a little more detail on that.
Okay, great. I'll wait.
But does that give you enough just to kind of get?
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Okay. So when, um, when the settlement, when we made the settlement agreement, um, that included, um, providing growth management exemptions for the 10 homesteads and acknowledging development rights for those. Um, there were a number of historic structures on the property, and so those were designated to the time, the, the historic inventory. This is before we had the register. Um, and, and growth management, growth management exemptions were provided based on that. So for four of the homesteads, numbers 1, 3, 5, and 9, they can develop up to their maximum floor area through the historic exemption. The other six, um, homesteads were, could be developed utilizing TDRs for, um, their above grade floor area. Um, so that's the very basic layout. We established envelopes. We established development rights for the parcels, and we specified an overall maximum floor area for the entire property that would then, the developer was allowed to kind of divvy that out, um, to the lots. Um, just quickly, I don't know how well this will play on screen. Um, but that's, that was, this is kind of the chart we've all been referring back to for years about who has what rights at Chapparal Ranch and how they get those rights, from the historic exemption or from TDRs. Um, and then, you know, this was to be developed. The important thing to note here that in my mind was really important at the time was we approved 4,000 below grade square feet and 750 square feet for garages. Those, that square footage did not require TDRs on the lots that needed TDRs. So the TDRs would accomplish basically. So the T D Rs would accomplish basically the, the floor area or what we think of as the above-grade floor area, but they didn't need T D Rs to develop what we now call gross floor area. So again, say Lot 4, that was a 7,500 square foot floor area, that would use two T D Rs, but they could also build the 4,000 below grade and the 750 garage without needing additional T D Rs for that space. So again, I think it's just kind of important to note that as we go forward through the rest of this discussion. I'll go back to just that main, main map. So along with the main ranch approvals, the, the owner at the time agreed to rezone the remote parcel to rural and rural and remote, which was done. And then the property was divided up into 10 35-plus acre parcels. Four of those parcels were then restricted against development through the creation of T D Rs. And the other six obtained growth management allotments to be able to develop, you know, a cabin under the rural remote restrictions. Only one cabin has been developed, and the other five remain undeveloped at this time. The other component was the affordable housing, which as I noted, they subdivided, built the units and deed restricted those units. So those were all components of the settlement agreement that, that were committed to by the applicant and completed as part of the development. So that's my really, really short background. And now I was going to talk more, go into the actual request for the extension of vested rights. Obviously, there's a lot of detail I'm leaving out, so I'm happy to, you know, try and answer those questions that come up. But I'll, I'll keep moving for now. The applicant's requesting a three-year extension of the vested rights at this time. I think just quickly to, you know, when we talk about vested rights, a vested rights is granted in association with what we call a site-specific development plan. The settlement agreement was specific that that was a site-specific development plan, and the vested rights were granted based on that. So now that the vesting is aspiring and we're re-upping a vested right, you know, we're looking at what section, what provisions of the code would apply that could affect this development and applying conditions to bring that, you know, to be consistent with current code. So that's part of the, the analysis we've gone through. But for the vested rights criteria in the code, the first are compliance with conditions requiring performance and progress made in pursuing the project to date. I'll go quickly through this list. But essentially, you know, they recorded all of the documents they were required to record. They rezoned the remote parcel. They deed restricted some of those, those parcels. They did put deed restrictions on those historic structures that would preserve them, and that was part of getting the growth management exemptions. They granted a public trail easement across the main ranch and the remote parcel to provide access to the public land beyond. They designated an agricultural easement over approximately 350 acres of historically irrigated land on the main ranch. They designated a wildlife protection area on the main ranch above the Salvation Ditch, which is basically those steep slopes, steeper slopes. The affordable housing was created. An additional affordable unit was created on Homestead 11A, which is the common parcel. There is a ranch manager deed restricted unit on that parcel as well. They went through growth management competition to obtain allotments for the six remote parcels. They, as part of the settlement agreement, agreed to waive any right to claim an agricultural status for property tax purposes once a residence was constructed on any homestead. And they agreed to basically aggregate their agricultural structures on the common parcel and not have separate agricultural structures on each of the individual homesteads. So those were all conditions that were required. I've mentioned, I think, the development that has occurred in terms of residential development. There's also been development on that common parcel with the 20-stall agricultural barn, an indoor riding arena, a hay barn, and that ranch manager's unit, as mentioned. They've also, you know, improved the roads, installed utilities, drilled wells, you know, done those kinds of things. So again, a lot has happened. What's interesting is what hasn't happened is that they haven't actually built very many of the houses that were approved. So I, you know, I'll just quote that the applicant, from their application, you know, they said, "The limited development compared to community benefits received has resulted in a significant benefit to the county and community with little impact from the approved free market development to date." You know, I, I would agree. It is just, it's interesting what all has occurred and then also what has not occurred. So again, the next criteria under the vesting extension is the nature and extent of any benefits already received by the county. Obviously, I just walked through some of those, but just to add a few, I mean, there's a no further subdivision restriction on both the main ranch and the remote parcel. The four historic structures have been preserved, 370 acres ground zone to rural remote, the public trail easement, the agricultural easement. There, we've gotten eight affordable housing units. When the settlement agreement was done, I mean, this was a reduction in the density that would have been allowed, otherwise allowed under RS20. There could have been 27 units on the main ranch. This was reduced to 10. There was a floor area limitation put into place. Originally, with 10 parcels, they could have built 15,000 square feet on each parcel. That was originally reduced to, from 150,000 total to 100,000 total, and then later to 85,000 square feet. And again, the limited development to date. I would note, you know, looking at this now, this is consistent with the 2016 Woody Creek Caucus master plan. The caucus did basically provide, say, "We have no comment. We have no concerns with this extension of vested rights." You know, and this is, again, for about 20 years, things have been, the property's been mostly vacant. So next criteria is the needs of the county and the applicant that would be served by approval of the extension. And this is always a time where we sort of go, "Well, this is great. Things haven't happened," but, you know, it's been 20 years. You know, is, is there more that can be done that would provide benefit to the county? And the applicant has provided some additional benefits that they've offered in order, in exchange for this three-year extension. They've proposed to reduce the above-grade floor area by 5%. So that would go from a total of 85,000 to 80,750 square feet. And again, they, I can bring up the table, but they've shown how they've, you know, that would be divided amongst the different homesteads. They've also proposed to reduce the below-grade floor area exemption from 4,000 to 2,500 square feet for each homestead. And with that, the T D Rs or growth management allotments would be required in order to, to build that below-grade space and the additional garage space. So that's a big change from the original approval, which basically gave them that square footage kind of free with of the use of T D Rs on those six parcels. You know, in the case of, you know, a parcel that could do, again, 7,500 square feet plus now 2,500 square feet of below grade. And garage, it would require more T D Rs now than it would have under the original approval. So that definitely brings it more to be consistent with current codes, utilizing the T D Rs again on those six homesteads. And I'll, we'll talk a little bit more about the development rights. The other proposal is they want to have the option to transfer the development right from Homestead 8 to Homestead 7, which basically would allow them to build one larger home on Homestead 7 and then restrict Homestead 8 against, sterilize it against future development. So there would be, in that case, there'd be one 9,500 square foot home with the below grade and garage rather than two 4750 square foot homes. They've also committed to use T D Rs from the Woody Creek area to the extent practicable and to comply with current land use and building code requirements related to energy conservation, efficient building, et cetera. Those are things that would be required under current code anyway. So just to talk a little bit more about, you know, to look at, this is the current table that's proposed for those floor areas and acknowledging the number of T D Rs that would be required on those T D R lots in order to accomplish that gross floor area. So I think I'll just, I'll put that up for now. And just to talk a little bit about the development rights, since one of the requests here is to confirm the development rights. And again, we're, on the main ranch, we're talking about development rights from T D Rs or from historic growth management exemptions. On the remote parcel, we're talking about growth management allotments. And just to walk through, you know, the issue there in terms of confirming the development rights. For T D Rs on the main ranch, the big change that has happened in the code since this was originally approved is that we no longer allow the use of T D Rs to establish development rights in the rural area. In 2000, we did. So there, the question is, are, you know, would like to verify that T D Rs could still be allowed for that initial development right moving forward. I talked a little bit in my memo about staff came to the B O C C in 2010 with a memorandum of interest that I attached to the, the packet that was addressing this very specific issue. Obviously, there are a number of properties in the county, in the rural area that you, that were, that were approved to use T D Rs for initial development rights before the code changed. And we came to the board at that time to basically say, "Here's, here's our, what we are looking at in terms of how we're approaching this," and essentially saying that the code finds that the use of a T D R does not lapse. So the use of that T D R does not go away. And at the time, the board, the B O C C concurred, and that's been the policy we've operated under since that time. So again, we, we find it's consistent with that to apply that policy and confirm the use of T D Rs for the initial development rights for homesteads 2, 4, 6, 7, sorry, 2, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 10 during this period of vested rights. The T D Rs for that would, would be valued as initially proposed, which was 5,000 square feet for the first T D R, 2,500 square feet for each additional T D R. And again, those T D Rs would be required to capture that below grade and garage space. So that's the lots using T D Rs. For the lots using historic exemptions, you know, deed restrictions were recorded to preserve those historic structures in perpetuity. And the code also does state that, that a historic GMQF exemption does not lapse. So again, in that case, we find it's appropriate to confirm, confirm the development rights granted in exchange for those. On those homesteads, that historic exemption is, provides them an exemption for the total gross floor area. So say on Lot 3, for 12,750 square feet, that is provided by the historic exemption. They are not required to use any T D Rs or growth management allotments in order to build that total gross floor area.
Suzanne, can you just zoom in on that chart? So if folks at home are looking at it.
I'm sorry, Kelly?
Oh, can you zoom in on the chart? That's good. Thank you.
That better?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, I was even having trouble seeing it on my screen. So, and then last, for development rights on the remote parcel, six of those parcels had, had competed in growth management. Only one has built. Again, the code specifies that growth management allotments do not lapse. Growth management allotments previously granted. There's been a change in the code, but that would affect only recent, you know, newer allotments granted since that time. So these would not lapse. And so there still would be five parcels with those growth management allotments remaining. The applicant also asked to clarify and to confirm that the owner could opt to sever those development rights by obtaining T D Rs rather than constructing. And, you know, yes, that is consistent with code and appropriate, so we have included that in the, in the conditions as well. Last couple of things. As mentioned, with an extension of vested rights, you know, we look to make sure that, that the, the development proposal is consistent with the new code or the current code. And one important change that we have in the code since then is that we now require site plan review rather than going straight to building permit. So we have added that as a condition for the houses, for the homesteads that have not yet developed, that they would be subject to site plan review before they could go to permit. That would give us the opportunity to address compliance with our scenic view protection criteria, the protective covenants and the design and development guidelines that were approved at the time, as well as the new driveway and building orientation guidelines, solar access, et cetera. So that would all be accomplished through the site plan review. Other things are small in terms of updating wildlife conditions and some wildfire things. And we also want to make sure we specify that floor area would be calculated based on the definition in effect at the time of permit. So those have all been included in the conditions of approval. So given that, we, we are supporting the three-year extension of vested rights. And just two more issues to discuss. The, the minor amendment was that at the time, caretaker dwelling units were limited to 700 square feet. The code now allows them to go up to 1,000 square feet. That does count out of their allowable floor area. So we are fine with that proposal to amend to allow them to go up to 1,000 net livable square feet. And then the last issue that I mentioned in the memo was related to the trail easement. And there had been some concerns about the way the easement was described in the easement versus what was shown on the plat. And I, the, the issue was raised by, by Open Space and the Attorney's Office. And I think the short version here is that the applicant is willing to clarify and amend the public trail easement to describe the location of the easement as five feet on either side of the centerline alignment of Discovery Way as built and in place through Chapparal Aspen and the remote parcels. Essentially, what that is saying is that the public trail easement exists on the existing platform of the road. And that was kind of what was, you know, the concern that had been raised before. So again, that has been addressed in the, in the conditions as well. So with that, we have recommended approval subject to conditions, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks Suzanne. Questions for Suzanne? Greg?
Yeah, hi Suzanne, thank you. Nice to see you again today. The trail easement, just, it was interesting to read that. I'm, I'm trying to remember the history of the trail easement and access through the ranch. Have there ever been issues regarding access through there? We have a, we have a trail easement, I understand, a public trail easement. Is that correct? That's how I'm reaching this?
Yes, that is correct. There is a public trail easement through the property.
God, and has that been respected historically? I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I may have my ranches confused, but I know there have been some access issues in the past, and I thought it was a missed neighborhood regarding access to public land and public trails.
I think over time, there have been some concerns raised about, you know, the public access through. I think at times, there's been some signage that we've had to address and make sure that the signage, you know, made it very clear that the public was allowed to come through. There were also trail issues related on the Aspen Valley Ranch. Concerns with, you know, so that you may have, you know, I think some of our bigger issues related to the access across Aspen Valley Ranch. But there have been, I think, some issues that have popped up over time related to this trail.
And my other question was just regarding severing, you were talking about severing, was it, T D Rs from, was it the rural? Rural remote parcels?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Thanks, that's it for me for now.
I see a hand from Francie, and then Steve?
Hi, I have a couple of questions. So the T D Rs that are going.
So the TDRs that are going to be severed, have they already been bought and gone into the coffers?
I'm sorry, the TDRs that were already severed?
Yeah, the, the, the TDRs that have been severed, have they, have they already been bought?
So actually, I guess a clarification on the TDRs is, so yes, four have been severed. I think there was a little, there was a misstatement in my memo, and I think in Mike's application regarding that they're required to be used on the main ranch, they are not. And the applicant had the option to sever TDRs or not. So they've severed four. I think two have been, I'd have to look back at my TDR information, I should have done that. I think two have been specifically sold to owners, current owners of homestead parcels. And I believe two actually were sold to owners of other properties. But I think the last I looked, those four have not actually been extinguished to date. But, and again, just to clarify, that they weren't required to use the, the TDRs from the remote parcel on the ranch.
Okay. And my other question is, yes, yes, it did, thank you. My, my other question is, the 80,000 plus change square foot floor allowance, does that include the agricultural buildings?
It does not. That was for the residential, for the, you know, the residential homesteads. There was a separate square footage specified for the common facility, you know, on the, for the barn facilities, the ag facilities. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but maybe Mike, Mike will when he does.
No worries, thank you.
Steve?
So I have several questions. One has to do with the use of the barn. I have, remember, talk that it was being used as a venue for big, huge parties and whatnot. Are there any restrictions on how the barn can be used on the property?
Steve, there were no restrictions at the time, you know, of the settlement agreement or after that thing. You know, I think we've done that on other properties where it was specified that it could not be used that way. We were made aware that there were events, pre-COVID, occurring out there that we really hadn't been aware of, and we did notify them that they would have to go through special review to be designated a special event venue to utilize the facilities for that purpose. That probably got sidetracked by COVID and whatnot. So that has, that application has not come through, but that is an issue that has been at least raised related to that use.
Okay. Second question, the, there are some restrictions on the use of the rural and remote properties. Who can use the cabins, what they can use cabins for, or cabins, I'd say cabins of 1,000 square foot dwellings. Could somebody actually live up there, or are they more for just a weekend retreat for the owners of the main lots, or what?
I don't know if Mike or Jocelyn can help with that one. I do think it, there was a restriction against it being a full-time use. And what has changed too is that all 10 of those parcels are owned by one owner from Chaparral. At the time, I think, you know, they envisioned it maybe, you know, being divided up amongst owners, so. But I do think, and maybe Mike or Jocelyn can confirm that, right, there, it was not intended to be a principal residence or a full-time residence.
Yeah, yep, Suzanne said it correctly, yep.
Okay. And final question for now, the lots two, three, and four, the building envelopes are right on the edge of the property, right above Little Woody Creek Road. Were there ever story polls set up? I know they don't have the houses designed, and there is concern, I just wonder where you'd be, you'd see the houses from on those lots?
Right. So, so no, I mean, at this point, only lot three, which is currently under development. Again, no, there was not a requirement to go through a further scenic review and do story polls. When lots two and four come through site plan review, we will look at scenic, and at that time, you know, we could require that they erect story polls to be able to look at it.
Okay, thanks, that's all I have for now.
Okay, sorry, Greg, go ahead.
Yeah, question just regarding the, let's see, I'm on page 190, where, where our, the applicant's concessions are here. I just see, last one, bullet point, compliance with current land use and building code requirements for energy conservation, current being current to construction. We give a three-year vested right and something changes, it's current to when they make the application and, and begin working, is that right?
So, right, I mean, they'll, you know, they'll get a three-year vested right now, but they will have to comply, you know, if they come in next, you know, next year for a permit, you know, our current requirements, conservation related, would all apply. And then actually, if there's anything adopted that changes, say, in the building code, that's rule of general applicability. They would also, you know, have to comply with that no matter what, even if it was still vested. So, but during that three years, if we adopt new changes into the land use code, again, depending how those are created, they, they, they might not be applicable until that, you know, the vested right has expired.
Got it, okay. The energy code probably would though, would, so current.
Right, energy code is going to be a rule of applicability.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions for Suzanne? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So Mike, we'll invite you to present. How are you? Nice to see you.
Just unclicking mute there. Hi, everybody, how's it going? I'm going to share my screen, Kelly, just give me a second, make sure this, this works here.
No worries. Kelly, I hope Mike knows that baby pictures are required.
Yeah. I can bring some up, after the meeting, I'll bring you.
All right, you can call me.
Yeah, we did have a little boy, we had, we had a little boy.
In November.
He's three-month-old.
Yeah.
Yeah, in November, yeah. Okay, thank you for having us, Kelly, and the board. Mike Kramer with Ben &amp; Adams, helping the Chaparral Home Owners Association. And we are here, as Suzanne said, for a request to extend vested property rights for a period of three years for the Chaparral Ranch located in Woody Creek. And we're also requesting a minor amendment to a development permit to expand floor area for caretaker dwelling units that were previously approved. We'd also like to confirm, as Suzanne said, you know, our understanding of development rights associated with previous B O C C resolutions as part of the process. On the call with us today is Jocelyn Wood, she's the attorney for the Chaparral Ranch HOA. She is a Chaparral expert and can help provide information and any of the details that we might need as we're going through our, our proposals today. So we have a presentation package, and we'll provide background, existing conditions on the ranch, and then touch on Chaparral land use history. We certainly aren't going to go into the, into the 500-page detail that we had in the application, but we're going to give you a really good outline so that you know what's going on up there. Okay. All right, so next slide. So this is an overall site map of the area. I think, Francie, you were asking where it was. I think the best way to describe Chaparral Ranch is, it's about a mile down valley from the tavern on the right-hand side. But, so you know which roads and what we're looking at here. This is Little Woody Creek Road right here, and then this is Woody Creek Road, and then this is Upper River Road right here. So this is kind of the project area.
I did look on Google Maps. So does it go all the way up to Stranahan's property or to the Aspen Community School?
No, not, not that far up. So this is the intersection of Woody Creek Road and Little Woody Creek Road. So Little, Little Woody Creek bears north, and then Woody Creek, Woody Creek Road keeps on going east over here. So I'm not sure what, which parcels these are up at the top of Little Woody Creek. I think probably Suzanne would know off the top of her head, but it doesn't go that far.
Okay, great, thank you.
So some of the property ownerships in the area include Aspen Valley Downs, which is, you know, this subdivision right here. Aspen Valley Ranch, Greg, I think you brought that one up earlier, that's this big ranch over here. And then sandwiched in between Chaparral Main Ranch and the remote parcels is a big chunk of B L M land, and that's that, this beige kind of semi-rectangle area right here. Also in the area is United States Forest Service land, and these arrows point to all this green shading, so it, so it's northwest, north, and east over here. So the Chaparral development is comprised of, of three main components. And the first is the main ranch, which totals 553 acres, and is divided into 10 homesteads for residential development, and then one homestead for agricultural facilities, all of which are approved for both agricultural and residential uses of varying sizes. So the main ranch is made up of historically irrigated lands that are relatively flat with different benches, and they are zoned RS 20, so 20-acre lot size minimums. Access to almost all of the homesteads is provided via Chaparral Way and Discovery Way, which divides the ranch. And there's a public access trail easement through the main ranch on Chaparral Drive, and Discovery Way for hiking, mountain biking, and bow hunting access. And it's used by both Chaparral property owners and locals alike. And the main ranch also has the agricultural facilities parcel that contains agricultural buildings to support the ranch, the ranch operations. This parcel, as was mentioned, also contains the ranch manager housing for him and his family, and we'll, we'll touch on that in a minute too. Okay, second component, as was mentioned, is the ranch, is the Chaparral remote lands, which are not contiguous to the main ranch, and they're separated by B L M lands. Remote parcel is 371 acres and is comprised of 10 parcels that range in size from 35 acres to 45 acres. Remote parcel lands are zoned rural and remote, and they could build 1,000 square-foot backcountry cabins, or TDRs can be severed off remote lands and then landed on the main ranch for future development of, of residences to the extent needed for development. Discovery Way provides access to the remote lands and includes a public trail easement also through that, that access drive for hiking, mountain biking, and bow hunting. Okay, and the third component, this map was, was provided earlier, is the Chaparral affordable housing units. They're located off River Rock Road and were constructed to offset the impacts from the main ranch development. So the employees that were generated from main ranch were mitigated with constructed affordable housing. The aged properties are identified as homesteads 11B and 11C, and they're both developed with deed restricted affordable housing that's, that's owned by Aspen locals and Picken County locals. So if it's okay with the board, I'd, I'd like to just quickly, briefly touch on the Chaparral land use history, which Suzanne did too. And I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty because there is a lot of it, but at the same time, if there are any details that you would like me to touch on, please ask me and Jocelyn, and we can, we can try and provide that additional information. So Chaparral Ranch is the result of a previous land use application for residential and agricultural development that was denied in 1999. And notable reasons for denial were based on lack of affordable housing and lack of growth, and, and the scale of growth management exemptions that were being requested. So after the denial, a lawsuit ensued, and the former property owner and the county agreed to a less, less intense development approval at the ranch. And that actually included participation and input from the Woody Creek Caucus at the time. And that all resulted and accumulated into B O C C Resolution 158-2000. And we, we, in the planning world, commonly recall, call that just the settlement agreement. So this agreement contained important Chaparral documents and parameters such as limits on density, floor area, TDRs, dedication of a trail easement, and maintenance of historic, historically irrigated lands. And it also incorporated the future use of remote lands and construction of affordable housing, which we'll get into in just a minute here. B O C C Resolution 158-2000 was identified as a site-specific development plan and was granted a five-year vested right. In 2004, near the expiration of those, those vested property rights, the previous property owner came in for an extension of vested rights in exchange for reduced development rights, among other changes, in order to gain the, the extension. So today, the ranch has a bulk floor area of 85,000 square feet of residential floor area, and it's divvied up among the homestead owners and includes 4,000 square-foot basements and 750 square-foot garages that were exempted from growth management. And that's that chart that was brought up earlier, there was the old chart showing how that bulk floor area was, was divvied up. And then we obviously have a new chart that would divvy up floor area, you know, differently with the reductions we're proposing. So vesting for these approvals expired on February 5th, and as was mentioned, we submitted our application in October for, for the extension. So this is the main ranch. It's comprised of 553 acres and is divided into 11 homesteads, all, all of which were approved for residential and agricultural development rights. Access to each homestead is provided by an approved platted access that's identified on the Chaparral plat. Platted building envelopes for future development were cited to avoid valuable irrigated pasture and also a clustered development along the edge of the meadows at the ranch. So there's, there's really some thought and some background to how these building envelopes got, got approved. There are two ways that the main ranch homesteads receive their development rights. So the first is through TDRs, which have a 5,000 square-foot value for an initial development right, and then a 2,500 square-foot value for additional floor area beyond that. So homesteads two, four, six, seven, eight, and 10 all get their development rights from, from transferable development rights. The second way that the ranch gains their development rights are through the historic growth management exemptions, and, and these were touched on just a little bit earlier. There's four cabins that are preserved in perpetuity and are deed restricted, and those homesteads that use those development rights then get to gain their, their floor areas and their construction of their future residences for that deed restriction. So homesteads one, three, five, and nine. So I, I really want to go quickly through these next few slides and just make the board of aware, board aware of existing conditions at the ranch. I, I definitely don't want to get into each piece of detail on every land use decision for all the homesteads. So if there are any questions in our application about, you know, what happened or what building envelopes got amended on each homestead, we can try and answer those to the best of our ability, but I'll go, I'll go through quickly how the branch is made up here. Okay. This is Homestead one, it's 95 acres in total, and it's the only homestead that is condominiumized into separate property interests. So this is not a subdivision of land, but rather a property interest division. And Homestead one A is 35 acres and is the only homestead that's accessed off Woody Creek Road, and it contains one of the four historic cabins at Chaparral. And I've also put the building envelopes on here too, so you can get an idea of where, where development is positioned or going to be positioned in the future for the ranch. This is Homestead one B, 60 acres, and gains its development, development rights from the GMQS exemption from the historic cabin on Homestead B. Homestead B was approved for a 10,000 square-foot residence plus exempt basement and garage. Homestead two is undeveloped, but submitted a building permit prior to the end of vested rights on February 5th, and using TDRs, it can build up to 7,500 square feet of above-grade floor area plus an exempt basement and garage, and that building envelope is right here. Homestead three contains an historic deed restricted cabin and gains its development rights from the cabin. It's approved for a 10,000 square-foot residence and exempt basement and garage, and at this time, there is a pending building permit for a 51, 5,135 square-foot residence. time, there is a pending building permit for a 51, uh, 5,135-square-foot residence, and that building envelope is right here. Homestead 4 is undeveloped and was approved to construct up to a 7,500-square-foot residence plus an exempt basement and garage through the use of TDRs. Homestead 5 gains its development rights from a deed restriction for historic cabin and was approved to build up to 10,000 square feet, plus an exempt basement and garage for that residence, through the historic exemption. This is Homestead 6. It's been issued a building permit and is currently under construction at the ranch. It attained its development rights through the use of TDRs, and the building permit for Homestead 6 is 8,247 square feet. This is Homestead 7. It's vacant and attains its development rights through TDRs, and it was approved to construct up to 5,000 square feet, plus an exempt basement and garage. This is Homestead 8. It's vacant and also gets its development rights through TDRs, and it was approved to develop up to 5,000 square feet of residence, plus an exempt basement and garage. This is Homestead 9. You can see the building envelope. If you can kind of see through the aerial, this is the only that was, that is developed, was built in 2009, and contains a 7,100-square-foot residence, plus basement and garage. It gets its development rights through an historic cabin, restricted, and resides on the property today. And this is Homestead 10. It is vacant and gets its development rights through the use of TDR. It's been approved for 7,500-square-foot residence, plus its exempt basement and garage. So that's all the residential homesteads on the main ranch. The last homestead is Homestead 11A, and this is the Chapparrell Ranch Agricultural Facilities parcel, or the common parcel, and it contains a 20-stall agricultural horse barn and a riding arena. I think, Francie, you had asked how, how big it was earlier, and I found two numbers. The riding arena is 17,000 square feet in size, and there's also a 1,200-square-foot hay barn on the property, too. And I don't have a number for the, for how big the horse barn is. Homestead 11A is also home to the ranch manager, Ty Boltard and his wife, Warren, and their children, who live in the 2,800-square-foot deed-restricted Category 4 affordable housing unit. And we've mentioned that this homestead has the riding arena and contains irrigated land on it, too. So this, this concludes the main ranch background, and you can see the development was positioned to avoid irrigated pasture and also retain to the best of their ability viable agricultural lands at the main ranch. So I was just going to do a quick check-in. Does anyone have any questions on the main ranch before I move on to the remote parcels?
Yes, Patty.
Yeah, Mike, can you again show, if, if seven and eight were to combine, and the development right of 9,000 something, wasn't it? Can you again show me on this mapping, seven and eight? And you probably don't have any idea where the building envelope would be located on that, because it could stay the way it is, or it could be a combined parcel. So there's eight.
Yeah, so, there's eight, and this is the building envelope for eight. And then, oop, sorry, went the wrong way.
So it's down, so it's the lower now?
This is, yeah, so this is the building envelope for seven. And, and I should make clear, too, Patty, that, you know, the, the parcels wouldn't be combined, and the building envelope would stay as-is. This Homestead 8 would be sterilized from development, so nothing would happen out here.
Okay, so the development would be on the lower one, and the upper one would stay and, and preserved. Okay, great, thank you, Mike.
Yep, yep, okay. Okay, I'm going to click through quickly and get back to where I was here.
Good to know.
Okay, and then Francie has questions.
Just a quick question about what's the historical agricultural use for these pastures?
Um, so the historical use has been irrigated lands in, you know...
But for what?
For hay, hay, hay pasture.
For hay?
Yep.
For pasture for horses, or cattle, or?
Um, that's a good question. Jocelyn, do you have knowledge on pasturing of animals?
Um, I do. They have run cattle on the property, you know, in, at times via leases. They've also grown potatoes on the property, and then they've grown hay and sold it to local ranchers for, for feed and, and then for their own personal uses for, on the property.
Hi, Jocelyn.
Hi, Francie.
Okay, I just, were there other questions? Um, sorry, Patty and Greg and...
Just real quick, wasn't it the old Wagner? Was it Steve, Steve, Mike? Was it the old Wagner Ranch way back? Okay.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, some of the, some of the property history, Patty, is that this is Lot 2 of the Elam subdivision, before it was div, divided up into the Chapparrell Ranch. So this was part of a larger parcel that was, that the Elam gravel pit is, is, was part of. So Elam gravel pit is Lot 1, and this is Lot 2.
Wow, interesting. Didn't know that.
Greg, and then Steve?
Um, yeah, thank you. I was just looking in the chat, and I saw Mr. Simon asked some questions regarding visibility from the road, 1, 2, 3, and 4. Would the building sites be visible, looming over Woody Creek Road, I think is how he phrased it? And then the second one was, uh, the, the Woody Creek School, Community School, is just up to the right side of this, would be, I guess, the east side. And how visible will all these places be to that school, which is kind of an bucolic rural setting looking out over the valley? Could you, could you address those two questions?
Actually, can I, can I jump in on that one, Greg?
Yeah, please.
So, right, I think, like I said to Steve, I mean, they will go through, for those that are closer to that edge, I guess, you know, 2 and 4 will go through basically a scenic review as part of site plan review. But just important to note that, you know, our, our review for scenic is based on the view from the public roads, not from adjacent properties, whether it be Aspen Valley Ranch or the Community School on the other side. So that would be our review standard under scenic, is to look at that.
I guess follow-up question would then be, is, is the road, the road to the Community School, that, that's a private road?
It's definitely not designated, you know, one of our, our public roads, right? So we'd be looking at what can, you know, is it visible from Woody Creek Road or Upper River Road? And obviously looking at, you know, from those roads, if you're looking up, obviously trying, you know, not breaking your ridge line, most particularly. But we'd be looking at that sighting and visual impact as part of site plan review.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
So I'm concerned about the, how the water rights are dibbied up to the different lots. Are the water rights commonly owned by everybody, or does each property have, you know, a fraction of the water rights based on what their percentage of the total property is? And also, would they be allowed to build fences, fence in their property from the other property, which could break up? These are some of the best hayfields in Woody Creek with really deep topsoil. I'd hate to see really good hayfields ruined by, you know, not being properly taken care of. So I guess, I'm curious how, how it is managed, how the water rights are administered, that sort of thing.
Can I address that? Um, I, the water rights are all owned by the HOA, and back in 2001, when, when, when Chapparrell was approved for development, Pickens County required that the HOA retained those water rights and that they keep the historically irrigated acreage in irrigation. And so that is, that was a, a development requirement, and it has been faithfully honored since that time. As for fencing, fencing, the design guidelines for this property prohibit any fencing outside of the building envelope, except for agricultural uses. And boundary fences are, are not allowed, and so it will retain its bucolic, you know, the HOA has to, has to irrigate it and has to hay it, and so they can't, you know, there is an agricultural easement that encumbered each and every lot on the property, and the owners cannot, they do not have control of the, the agricultural easement.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, and then I have a question with regards to the affordable housing. Was that credited as mitigation for current or future construction?
So the, the affordable housing that was developed was required to be in place prior to development of the residential components of the ranch, and it was, it was intended to offset the, the employee generation from the main ranch.
Okay. Um, I'm sort of curious how that, how that mitigation number play, have we, have we zeroed out, like, with this, either the buildings that have come in under building permit or are under construction? Does that zero out the mitigation that's provided at this point, or is there a net, you know, deficit or credit due to those?
Um, I'd probably have to see if, you'd probably have to look at the most recent building permit application for six to see if there was any additional affordable housing mitigation required. I, I just don't know the answer to, to any additionals, Kelly.
Okay.
And I can say that in 2001, it was the number of bedrooms that were required, and the developer elected to build the number of bedrooms in eight affordable units, and those bedroom numbers were meant to mitigate, you know, the entire, the entire ranch. I think there are, the ranch manager's, Ty Boltard's unit is a four-bedroom unit, and then the housing that's on the Rio Grande Trail are three-bedrooms and two-bedroom units. So there are three three-bedroom and four two-bedroom units that are pertinent to the Chapparrell subdivision.
So then, just for further clarification for Suzanne or John Ely, is, is our housing mitigation one of the rules of general applicability that would factor in as developments come in to be constructed?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Francie, I see your hand.
Hi, I'm wondering in general if there's any distinction between agricultural land for horses and agricultural land for the production of food products of some kind? Because this is a lot of building to house horses, and it, it happens everywhere. This is not just unique to this valley, but, you know, if it's classified agricultural, is that just fine, that it's just horses? Because that's kind of more like open space, it seems to me. Anybody know?
Well, I can answer that from a tax standpoint. Having horses does not qualify you for, you know, for an agricultural use. Growing hay does, however, because that provides food for animals that humans eat. Potatoes, that's also agricultural, and running cattle, that's also agricultural. So horses alone do not qualify as an agricultural use.
Okay, that helps. So, but even if the hay that's grown, if it's all consumed by the horses, it still is okay?
Um, no. I, I mean, that's not how it's consumed at this time, because I don't think there really are any horses on the ranch right now. They, the cattle, I think, consumed most of the hay, or individual owners, you know, used it for their own horses, kept elsewhere. But yeah, no, that, I, I would say that growing hay is deemed to be agricultural for the state of Colorado.
Okay, thanks, Jocelyn.
Any other questions for Mike at this point? Okay, Mike, if you want to continue on, thank you.
Okay, keep rolling.
Yep, please.
Okay, these are the Chapparrell rural and remote parcels, and as I mentioned, they, they total 371 acres, and they are comprised of ten parcels that range in size from 35 acres to 45 acres. The Chapparrell remote lands were previously zoned RS20, and during the settlement agreement, they were downzoned to rural and remote, so they're in compliance with that approval. Access to the Chapparrell Aspen remote lands is provided via Discovery Way, which you can see traverses the parcels through here, and terminates at the northern boundary, and continues on to Forest Service lands. Discovery Way, as I mentioned, contains a public access trail easement granted to the benefit of the general public and allows access through the remote lands in use today. This map is the makeup of the remote lands, parcels 1 through 10, and you might notice some odd numbering on the eastern portion of the map. It goes 7, 10, 9, 8, and don't ask me how, why that's like that, but it is, it just was plotted that way. With rural and remote zoning, backcountry cabins of 1,000 square feet can be built, or TDRs can be severed from these parcels, which some have. And the TDRs can be landed on the main ranch for residential development to the extent needed at the main ranch. Of the 10 remote parcels, only one is currently developed with a, with a 1,000-square-foot rural and remote cabin. That's, that's rural and remote parcel 10 right here, highlighted in orange. And I think, Steve, you brought this up earlier, you're asking about the limited use. My notes show here that is limited use for recreational purposes, and it is not intended for year-round occupancy at the cabin. This is a map of remote parcels 2, 3, 4, and 9, and these are the parcels that have severed their development rights, have been issued TDRs that have or would be used on the main ranch. These TDR'd remote parcels will be preserved in perpetuity and cannot be developed. And I'd just like to add, too, that, that pending the outcome of this extension application, the remote parcel owner is considering severing the remaining TDRs, which means that parcels 1, 5, 6, 7, and 8 would potentially also be preserved. So this summarizes the remote parcels and their development rights. And before I move on to the affordable housing component, are there any questions on the remote parcels?
Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I, it's, it's interesting to see that they're thinking of, of neutralizing those parts, parcels, and, and I, I'm just wondering about the grade on, on those parcels, those areas. Are they, I, I'm looking across the valley at it from my place, and I, I'm trying to figure out what I'm looking at, and it just looks like it's really steep terrain. Is that correct?
It is.
And 10 is a developed one?
Yeah, it, it, it's really steep, Greg, and it's south-facing, so you can see where the, where the vegetation line is here.
Yeah.
So, yeah, steep grades, and 10, the highlighted one here in orange, is the only rural and remote parcel that's been developed.
Right, got it, okay, and there's a cabin or something on that. Okay, I think I, is it right on the ridge line, or is it just below the ridge?
Um, I, well, I can't see from your, from your window.
Yeah.
But, but it's right here, and, I mean, it's developed, yeah, I, I don't know about the ridge or not, as it really is.
Right, okay, just trying to get a reference for it. Okay, thanks.
Um, I have a question.
Okay, should I move on?
Sorry, I just have a question. Where, where does the public park to access this trail up through Forest Service?
Mm-hmm. So there's a little parking area across from Chapparrell Drive that people will commonly park at, or there's, and I know this probably isn't good to say, but there has been parking that's happened on Upper River Road, and then folks will, will access the trail that way, down by this entrance at Chapparrell Ranch.
Okay. So they hike all the way up Chapparrell Road to get on Discovery Way?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mike on the remote parcels? Not seeing any.
Okay, I'll keep on chugging here.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the Chapparrell affordable housing development, and I might have misspoke, I said River Rock Way. I might, I meant to say it's located off Rock Hollow Way. Sorry, River Rock Way is a different road. And was subdivided from Homestead 11A, which is the agricultural facility, common parcel, at the main ranch. And during the subdivision process, the land was rezoned to affordable housing. And Chaparral affordable housing now is comprised of two parcels, 11B right here and 11C. So 11B, highlighted in orange right here, is about an acre in size. And it's developed with two buildings, each containing two duplex dwelling units of two bedrooms each. These units are deed restricted at a category four rate and are owned by local Picken County residents. This is Homestead 11C in orange. And it's also about an acre in size. And it's developed with three-bedroom, single-family houses that are all occupied by local Picken County workers. So when you add up all the units and bedrooms for the affordable housing parcels, there are seven units with a total of 17 bedrooms for local Picken County workers. And this is a picture, I actually took this this morning as I was coming up into work. These are the units. And this is a picture I took from Chaparral Drive. So I'm looking east, southeast. And I think that's Red Mountain there in the background, just for perspective. And as you're traveling up and down Upper River Road, for those who don't know the units, you can actually see them really well from Upper River Road. If you just, if you're heading down Valley and glance to the right, you'll see them there. So that concludes the Chaparral affordable housing parcels. And I'll just do a quick check in again, Kelly. Does anyone have any questions before I move on to a summary of our proposal and some other benefits that we outlined?
Steve.
Mike, I want to find out a little bit more about the restrictions on the use of the public right-of-way through there. I know that at one point, they banned people from carrying, from hunters carrying rifles through the property. But they allow, I think bow hunters to walk through the property to get to their hunting. There's also some restriction, I think it was against people riding horses through there. I think people could take their dogs, but not horses. And I'm curious about bicycles. And also, what is the justification for having restrictions on the public right-of-way at all?
I can speak to a couple of those points, Steve, but I might have to have Jocelyn also talk to some of them. So yes, you know, it does, the easement along Chaparral Drive and Discovery Way does allow bow hunting. And bow hunters do access up there. And I think it came up earlier about some, about Chaparral limiting use on the trail. And there was some bad signage that was up there prior to, and we worked with the county attorney's office and it's removed now too. So that, it needed to go away. It wasn't good and it deterred the public and it was confusing. So that signage is gone. As far as horseback riding and dogs, Jocelyn, any chance you have knowledge on that piece of it, on the use of the trail?
I do. And again, Steve, the public trail easement was dictated by Picken County back in 2001. And so as part of it, as part of the approvals, it required that the public trail easement preclude firearms. I think is the word that's used. It also precluded the public from bringing their dog up the trail because it's a sensitive wildlife area. So it's a no-dog, no-firearm trail. However, you know, bow hunting is not considered, you know, that's not really a firearm. So, you know, that is allowed there. Mountain biking is also allowed and is, and it's well-used, I would say, from a mountain bike perspective. The public, the public trail does allow for that, the current easement. And I don't think it is proposed that any of the use restrictions that Picken County originally requested, none of those are requested to be amended. Either by Picken County or by the Aspen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there other questions? All right, seeing none, we can keep going, Mike, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so Chaparral has a complex land use history, as we talked about. That resulted in development rights for the ranch. But it also contains many benefits to the community. And these include, I'm just going to run through a few of them here. 351 acres and an easement for main ranch lands to remain irrigated and in agricultural production. As we talked about, a 10-foot wide public trail easement along Chaparral Drive and Discovery Way. We'll get in the next slide here, we'll talk about clarifying that easement too. So it's a better easement and it's not confusing. Historically deed restricted four cabins in perpetuity at the ranch in exchange for development rights. Downzoning of the remote parcel from RS 20 to rural and remote that limited, further limited development rights. Use of remote parcel TDRs on the main ranch to the extent needed for any development. And then, this is also a really big one, no further subdivision of land in perpetuity. So we will never see any more development at the main ranch or the remote parcels due to restrictions on further subdivision. Seven affordable housing units, as we talked about, four duplexes and three single-family homes that were completed in 2004. Ranch manager's unit occupied by the Chaparral ranch manager Ty Bertard and his wife Lauren Wagner-Bertard and their children. And to date, only one homestead has been fully developed, that's Homestead nine. Okay, so this is our request for a three-year extension of vested rights. And I just want to go through what Suzanne had touched on earlier. So we, in addition to compliance with the Land use code, we would like to offer up 5% above-grade floor area reduction. So what that means is that currently, there's 85,000 square feet of floor area that's divvied up among all the homesteads. A 5% reduction equates to 4,250 square feet. And then that would result in a, above, floor area max above grade at 80,750 square feet. So that's one of our offers. The second is a maximum basement reduction. So currently at the ranch, there's a 4,000-square-foot basement that could be built. And it's really big, we know it. And we'd like to reduce that to 2,500-square-foot maximum. And what that does is that that reduces total basement square footage to 15,000 square feet. And equates to a 37% reduction in that square footage. And we really think that this is a generous offer. It also reduces the amount of truck trips along county roads and the state highway. And then also would potentially reduce any of the fill going to our Picken County landfill and hopefully extending some of its life. Three, we'll eliminate the 4,000-square-foot exempt basements at the ranch. So under today's code, if somebody wants to build the basement, you would need a TDR or a successful growth management allotment. And we want to comply with the current code, so we want to offer that too. Number four, we would eliminate the exemption for the 750-square-foot garage. So if anybody wants to build it, they need a TDR or a successful GMQS allotment. And any garages that exceed 750 square feet are counted against the allowable floor area for that homestead. We'd also like to continue the value of the TDRs. So the settlement agreement had a 5,000-square-foot initial development right value for a TDR. And we want to continue that. And the reason it's important is because if you read in the packet, there was a memo in 2010 that talked about initial development right TDRs being worth 5,750 square feet. So we feel that just continuing what was previously approved is a good approach and we'd like to do that. At the same token, 2,500 square feet for additional development beyond 5,000 square feet for a TDR is what we're proposing too. Okay, number six, optional development right transfer from Homestead eight to seven. Patty, you were touching on this. So under our proposal, Homestead eight and seven both could develop 4,750 square feet above grade. And then a 2,500-square-foot basement and a 750-square-foot garage. This would provide a development option to transfer the above-grade floor area from Homestead eight to seven. And if that happened, there would be a 9,500-square-foot above-grade residence. Plus a 2,500-square-foot basement, 750-square-foot garage. And in this proposal, that basement and garage floor area would not transfer. That would just, that would just go proof and go away. So we think this is a really good option and would reduce density at the ranch. And furthermore, if this option ends up, you know, coming to fruition, Homestead eight would be sterilized from future development. And we'd be happy to do that with a deed restriction or a covenant or whatever the county would require at the time for that. Number seven is, if necessary, only if necessary, TDRs sourced from outside the Woody Creek area. You know, we would make Woody Creek TDRs a priority if they're needed at the main ranch. But we're not anticipating many more TDRs needed at all at the ranch. And then eight, compliance with current Picken County energy codes. So we would have current Picken County building code compliance. And then land use code compliance as it relates to solar siting and access and building orientation. So that's our request and some of the things that we'd like to offer with this. We'd also like to confirm our development rights that Suzanne touched on earlier. So one, TDRs, we'd like to confirm that the initial development right TDRs do not lapse. And that additional floor area TDRs do not lapse. And we are aware that the draft resolution is written such that TDRs and their development rights are rife with the vesting period for this extension. So we did notice that in the resell. Number two, historic GMQS exemption rights. So the development rights associated with the four cabins and their above-grade, below-grade, and garage floor area do not lapse. And then three, the remote parcels, the GMQS allotments for one, five, six, seven, eight, 10 do not lapse. And then we'd also like to confirm that TDRs may be severed from the remote parcels, the rest of the remote parcels. And then used on the main ranch or sold off the ranch if there's no demand on the main ranch. So those are three confirmed development right pieces we wanted to touch on. And then lastly, caretaker dwelling units. It was mentioned earlier, currently, under the previous settlement agreement and previous code, there was a limit of 700 square feet for CDUs. And we'd like to increase that to 1,000 square feet. It'd be consistent with current code and it would obviously count against floor area for each homestead. And then lastly, supporter no objection. In your packet, you saw that the Woody Creek Caucus Planning Commission had no objection to our proposal. We're really happy about that. Two, Picken County open space and trails. They support our application with a trail easement clarification. And you should have in your packet a letter from Jocelyn that talked about our willingness to do it. And so today, there is an issue with how the trail is described in an easement and then platted. And then how it relates to the actual existing roads on the ranch. And they don't line up and there's a discrepancy. So we'd like to clarify that easement through this process. And if there's a resolution that's approved, we would clarify it with the recordation of the resolution or however the county wants to do it. But we're definitely willing to do that and make it right. And then lastly, obviously, we had staff recommendation of approval with conditions. We worked with Suzanne a little bit before the hearing to go over some, just clarifications that we'd like to see in the resolution. So I'm not sure if she wanted to touch on that or we can when the time comes with the board. So we feel our application is compliant with land use code, specifically section 220170D. And the Woody Creek Caucus master plan, which is the applicable master plan in the area. We also feel that our application is reasonable and proportional and only requests a three-year extension. Which is consistent with the vesting period for a typical land use application. And we also feel our application achieves compliance with the current land use code requirements in effect today. And we hope that you all agree. So thank you and please let me know if Jocelyn and I can clarify anything that we talked about in our presentation. And I can stop sharing my screen now too, Kelly, turn it off.
Thank you, yeah, we, maybe we'll see as our discussion goes. So before I open it up for public hearing, I'll just summarize how we move forward. We can take this time to get any final clarifications or additional clarifications, I should say, that the board has from Mike or Jocelyn or staff. Then we'll open it up to the public hearing. And I'll bring it back to the board for discussion or to get any questions answered that may have come to light during the public hearing. And that's how we'll spend the rest of our time together. So with that, are there any additional questions for the applicant or staff? Greg, and then Francie.
Great, thank you. This is probably, oh, Mike would probably know this and Suzanne as well, just regarding the TDR severance from the rural remote parcels up there. My big question, and this is a naive question, but is that even developable land at all? Some of this looks so steep and so remote. Is that practically developable? Are we severing a TDR from something that would never be developed anyway? And not to be unfair, just wondering, you know, how does this work?
I can step in on that one. They competed in growth management at that time, established envelope. So they had to go through the analysis under the code at that time that they could create an envelope that complied with the code. So they were able to do that. Doesn't necessarily mean there's the greatest places to build cabins, but they were able to, you know, avoid slopes, you know, et cetera, address the wildlife issues. You know, the things we do when we establish an envelope.
Right, thank you, thanks for the clarification, that's all.
Thanks, Greg. Francie?
Since you're asking for a three-year extension, does that mean that the owners are planning to do their, begin their development in the next three years?
Yep, that's our understanding, Francie.
And the one building that's already under construction, is that, that's part of the HOA as well and just like the first step?
Yeah, Homestead six, yep, they submitted for a building permit, pulled it, and they're under construction. And then Homesteads two and three both have pending building permits too. So there's action, there's action happening at the ranch.
Okay. I was just going to ask, the property now is then individually currently owned by different owners? Or if there's like a developer still involved who owns quite a bit of it?
Jocelyn, can you, could you speak to ownership on that one? You're probably the best one to answer that.
You're muted, Jocelyn.
You're muted.
Didn't want you to hear my dog. The homesteads are all individually owned. Homestead seven and eight are, they do happen to be owned by the same owner. Which is why, you know, we're considering that sterilization of one of those lots. But all the rest are owned and I would say that some are, will develop in the next three years and some will not. And as for the remote parcels, those are all owned by a single LLC.
Single LLC?
Yeah, that is also involved in, that also owns the homestead below. The principals of that LLC own on the main ranch.
Okay, great, thanks, Jocelyn.
I just wanted to add one thing too. When the homesteads that still, that will have to go through site plan review, that site plan review will get a three-year vested right before they have to come in, you know, for permit on that. So basically, you know, they have time now built in with this vested right to go through that process. But then once they've done that site plan for that specific property, that site plan will have its own three-year vested right.
Thank you. I have a question, what is the condition of the four historic cabins and the use?
So, you want to address that? I mean.
Go for it.
Those cabins are actively used and actively being used. So there's, two of those cabins are on Homestead 1A. And one is occupied, it's the former Braun farmhouse. And it's on the Woody Creek Road. And then there's another, almost like a caretaker cabin on that property. And then there's a And then there's a cabin on Homestead three that has been very well renovated and maintained. And it is actually occupied by the Braun. That is their primary dwelling and it's probably about maybe 1,200 square feet, I would think. And then on Homestead nine, there is a cabin used by the owner who has built his primary residence and he uses it for guests and for whatever. But they're lovely. I'm sorry, we don't have any photos of them, but they've been very well, in conjunction with Susannah Reed at the Historical Society, I mean, they've been well maintained and kept up for their deed restrictions.
And then just as a point of, I don't know, I guess, just looking at the polar opposite. Suzanne, what happens, what does this look like if we deny the vested rights request? Like what does that look like for the applicant and for these longstanding development approvals?
You know, we'd have to look at what does lapse, I guess, if there is no vested right. You know, I don't know that I have a good answer for that. I probably want John or Ry to jump in with me on that one about what that looks like in terms of their development rights and moving forward.
Well, the effect really is that they're subject to any changes in the land use code. If there are no changes that are coming between now and whenever it is that they want to pull a permit and begin building, then it doesn't really affect them much at all. But what the vested right extension does is insulate them against any changes in the land use code such that, well, they can anticipate what the regulatory scheme is going to be when they come in and apply for a building permit.
And that's what would be applicable on the nine remote sites and the remaining Homestead sites that don't have current construction or a building permit application, right?
Right.
Patty?
Can I tag on to that, John? But how is it different because this has a settlement agreement rather than your basic application approval? Is that, does a settlement agreement based on the lawsuit have any more, you know, input into this?
I haven't seen that settlement agreement in a long time. Typically speaking, the terms of the settlement agreement relate to, well, to the settlement of litigation. And so they survive longer than a vested rights period. I would assume that's the case here.
So things like house size that were part of the settlement agreement would carry over even if the vesting didn't and we changed house size? So I mean, it's... Yeah. So there's a little difference there because of that. This is, I think, one of my first lawsuits I was involved in as a commissioner because I was on the board in 1999 when we denied it.
Okay. Any other questions before I go to the public hearing? And again, you'll have an opportunity to answer anything if it comes back. Francie, is that a new hand up? Okay, go ahead.
So I just want to clarify. So if the board, not saying will, but were the board to change the maximum house size in the county, it would not affect this anyway because they have existing documents that protect them from that? Is that what I just heard you say, John?
Yes, Francie, that's basically what I said. But I'd have to check the settlement agreement. Like I said, it's been a long time since I've seen it.
Okay, so in other words, the mitigating compromises that they're suggesting seem to be in our favor because it doesn't seem like the consequences for them are too drastic, no matter what we do between now and when they build out.
Right, well, the aspects of the request that Mike went over, you know, enumerated all of the additional benefits to the county at large in the form of reduced development pressure. So, you know, that is a benefit, so to speak, to the county, particularly in regards to growth. The benefit to the property owner is that there is security against any other regulatory changes.
Yeah, I just can't help but saying that a 10,000 square foot house is a marginal benefit to the county here. Here we are.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I'm not seeing any other hands, so let's go ahead to the public hearing. Again, if any members of the public are watching, you are invited to call in to comment on the resolution approving a three-year extension of vested rights for the Chaparral Aspen Homesteads and Chaparral Remote Parcels that have been discussed over the last hour and a half. And I see Scott Simon has joined us, has been with us, I think, throughout the presentation. So Scott, if you'd like to comment to the board, please do so now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Look at that. I actually just was curious. So I live down on Little Woody Creek Road at the bottom below the Aspen Hill and Lee property, an old housing property. Why was lot three, why did it not require story poles? And what would make any other lots require story poles if it didn't?
So why don't, if you have additional questions, why don't we collect them all as well as your comment and then I'll make sure staff answers them?
That's it at this point.
Okay. Okay, well, thanks for joining us, Scott. We appreciate the questions you put in the chat, which I think have been answered except for this last one. I don't see any other folks joining at this point for public comment. So I'll give it another minute and then we'll close it off and we'll answer Scott's question. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then Suzanne, would you like to answer Scott's question related to why story poles were not put up for lot three?
I'd be happy to. I mean, basically, they're operating under this approval that's been in place since 2000. It has design requirements in their protective covenant. Nothing, I guess, required that they do a story pole exercise for viewing. So again, moving forward, under this new vested right for two and four, I think are the ones that it could apply to. Again, we don't always, when we're doing a scenic review, we don't always require story poles. We usually do that if we have any question about the potential to break a ridge line. You know, then we request that of an applicant. So again, it would be, that would be, it's not necessarily a specific requirement, but it is certainly a tool we use if we think it's appropriate when we're doing a scenic review.
Okay, thank you. So let me bring this back to the board for discussion or if any, if you've gotten any new questions that have risen for you. I'll open it up to the B O C C. No? Patty, go ahead.
I just have a comment. I appreciate the extension of benefits to the county that the applicant is presenting to us. I'm in support of a three-year extension of their vesting. Actually, I'm going to find this unusual, but I think a five-year extension would be great because I think it would better pace the development of those parcels rather than, even if it was six years from the time they applied and got their permit, they have another three-year vesting. But that's, you know, there's a significant amount of development that's allowed up there, which I think we all agree on. And I think to push that into a smaller timeframe would have a huge impact to the Lower River Road, to Woody Creek, to the community. So I would rather see pacing of the development stretched out a little further. But I'm just throwing that out there. I'm happy with three, but I think five might be something we might want to consider. I don't think the applicant would be against that. But, you know, just for me, that would really help with pacing of development in the future years.
Okay, other comments? Steve?
So that's a great idea, Patty. One of my comments was to point out that the long vesting period that they have had so far has worked to the benefit of the community because it hasn't forced the development to all go forward real quickly. I've always been in favor of longer vesting periods so people don't feel rushed, like they have to go build the house right now. And then if they have that feeling, they feel like they have to build it to the maximum square footage because they're afraid they're going to lose their rights. The longer vesting period works to everyone's advantage, I believe. And now, since Commissioner Newman is no longer on our board, he's always adamantly against anything greater than a three-year vesting. I would support a five-year vesting also, Patty. I'm in support of approval of this project as it's been presented to us. I can see different benefits from different parts of it. And I'll try to go through those. Looking at the location of the building envelope on lot eight, it looks like it's right next to one of the houses at the Aspen Valley Downs. And moving, combining that with the house on lot seven would actually put the house farther away from Aspen Valley Downs and would, I think, improve everybody's view from there from both directions. They wouldn't be right next to a neighboring house. So that, I think, that I think is a good idea if the owner wants to do that. I like the idea that the owner of the remote lots is probably going to sell off the TDRs from the remaining sites. I think that would really make the one cabin that's up there a really special place. It would be the only one up there. It would be unique. It would be more precious, I think, than not having other cabins up there. I really am pleased that the solution has finally been found to get the easement on the public trail lined up with where the trail actually goes on the ground. That was really a point of major contention a few years ago with our board. And I don't know, maybe I was the only one of us who was on the board at that time. But that was kind of a non-solvable problem because the two sides were kind of butting heads. It evolved around the sign that was up there that was confusing and kind of antagonistic against the public using it. So I'm glad that we have a solution at hand that I think is the logical way to go, to just put the easement where the road is right now. And then that, I think, works for everybody. I'm glad that the water rights and the fence building and all that is designed to preserve the use of the agricultural water, to preserve the hay fields without chopping them up too much. That's really a good part of the plan. Of course, it's not changing now, but I was pleased to find that out. I've seen too many subdivision kind of things where they drew arbitrary lines that paid no attention to where the ditches go, where the fields are, where the water wants to run, all those sorts of questions. I think my one main concern would be about the location of those houses along the hillside, right above Little Woody Creek Road. I doubt if you'll be able to see the houses from Little Woody Creek Road. But they're very likely to be able to see them from the residents living on Little Woody Creek Road just because they're going to be set farther away. And I would not be at all surprised that some of them might be able to see some of those houses, which is unfortunate. The building envelopes were set up a long, long time ago. And I think the only thing that could be of the owners of those were sensitive to their neighbors down below them and designed their house and located it on the building envelope to minimize whether it's seen from down below. I'm in favor of all of the parts that, the extra things like guaranteeing that the TDRs are worth 5,000 for the initial development, 2,500 for the additional square footage. Also that the development right for X amount of square footage is guaranteed. It goes, you know, we're saying it goes with the land. We're talking about perhaps reducing the maximum size of houses. I think any house that were already approved, whether they've been built or not, would be guaranteed what footage they are given. Also, I think the applicant is being very generous in reduction of square footage, getting rid of the exempt basement and garage. In effect, you're extending the vesting rights and yet you're giving up a lot of vesting rights that you have right now. By changing, you know, you're really complying with a lot of the current land use and building regulations, like complying with our residential energy code. And so I think the applicant is being really very generous in what you're willingly giving up instead of, I mean, you could be fighting the other way saying, "We want to keep the exempt basement. We want to keep the exempt garage" and things like that. And you're not asking for that. So the county and the public really are benefiting from the reduction in the total mass of the buildings, potential reduction in the density of seven and eight are combined and if no more remote cabins are built up there. I think there's a lot of good things to say for this application. So I'm in favor of approval.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Other comments? Francie?
I'm also in favor of approval, but I do want to say that I hope that our approval of these rights, this ability to build this much square footage is not later used as precedent so that it's hard to escape from 10,000 square foot houses and 8,000 square foot houses and 80,000 square foot subdivisions. And it's just that, I do think it's generous. I do appreciate the generosity of the owners in putting forth these, I would say, gifts to the county to make this happen. But I just am expressing my hope that some of the owners will say, "Oh, well, I don't really need 10,000 square feet. I'll build something smaller, but thank you for the right to build 10,000 square."
Okay, thanks, Francie. Greg, you ready to go or you want me to go?
Yeah, I can go. Yeah, I agree with what I've heard so far from everyone. I guess the one thing that I'm stuck on here is just wondering, what will the development of these lots do for the view planes, for the people above them, including the community school, which is a great public asset? And I'm just wondering if it's practical in any way to put in some stipulation about screening. Some of these places could be screening or views could be broken up so that the, you know, the new development isn't as prominent. up so that the, you know, the new development isn't as, uh, prominent i- in the view, uh, from those locations? And, you know, if there's something we could specify and that they could stick to that would, um, you know, whether it's just adding trees or adding, uh, uh, you know, foliage of some sort to break up the view, just, uh, might be something that, uh, we really appreciate and the public appreciates later, that, that hillside above there really is a public, uh, space. Thanks.
Can I just add to that?
Yeah, Patty.
Yeah, Greg, um, and Suzanne, correct me if I'm wrong, but wouldn't that come up at site plan review when we could actually ask for, depending upon the view plane, the scenic issues, even though it's only scenic review over the road view plane? But couldn't, isn't, wouldn't that be more part of site plan review?
At site plan review, we would see a landscape plan with it, um, again, and that would, you know, that, as the site plan review would be done administratively with notice. It would not, you know, come to the B O C C, um, necessarily unless on an appeal or something. But, um, again, we, you know, the code does not specify any view planes other than from public roads. So specifically for these properties, we're talking about Upper River Road and Woody Creek Road. Even Little Woody Creek Road is not, it's not a public road, actually, and it's definitely not designated in the code. So, you know, what you're asking for would go, you know, beyond what the code would, would require in terms of, you know, a view plane from the Woody Creek, you know, the community school or something like that.
Well, I guess the question is, I'd like to consider that, um, as part of our extension of vesting rights, which I have no problem with. Making the vesting rights go longer, um, is actually an interesting thought, and I'm, I'm wondering, Suzanne, my other question is, would you have any, any thing to share with us on, on that? Maybe, you know, would it make, you know, I, I, what I'd really like to do is see it developed well and thoughtfully without rushing, uh, on a time scale that makes sense to them, um, and maybe we could ask for screening as a result.
Suzanne, you wanna respond?
And then Steve?
Um, sorry, I guess, um, I mean, if you wanted to put a condition on about screening, you know, we could, you know, to be considered at site plan review. Again, our concern always too, I mean, I get screening, but we are also are trying to, and we, we, we've seen properties where the landscaping actually created more of a change in the character on the property than the house itself. So, you know, I just wanna be sensitive to kind of that issue is, you know, no, we don't wanna have them put a huge line of trees along that ledge just so the neighbors to one direction don't see the house, which might create its whole own, you know, concern, visual concern. So, um, anyway, I guess on that, you know, it would go through our process if you wanted to add some language, I guess, for consideration of some specific view plane, you know, a view plane from the community school and to at least look at that as part of the site plan review. You know, we could add something like that into the conditions.
I would, I would, uh, be in favor of doing that, and, and yes, I certainly don't wanna create rows of spruce trees or things like that, um, but I think it'd be, it'd be great if that became part of the administrative review, that you considered it as well as the view from the, the roads. Um, I don't think that's an onerous thing to ask. In some cases, it may not even be possible, and I understand that, but there, there just might be ways of, you know, a few well-placed trees could make a, a big difference, and it'd be nice to be able to ask for that.
Um, Steve? Go ahead, please.
Why don't you go to Mike right now?
No, it's okay. I'd rather c- deal with Commissioner comments, and then we can check in with the applicant about any conditions proposed and what reactions they might have in our conversation.
Okay. I would be in favor of requiring some, some vegetative screening to take place at each of the site sites. I believe that the, the house on Lot 9 has some, quite a few trees planted there, if I just kind of recall the view looking from the highway. Is that correct, Mike?
There is some screening on Homestead 9, um, and there's also, it's hard to tell from the highway because you can't tell where the parcel boundaries are, but there's also some trees that were planted on Homestead 10, too.
Okay. Thank you. And to, to Suzanne's point, how trees can totally change the look of a property. If you could see Little Elk Creek Village 60 years ago, there were no trees there. There were so, a few willow bushes. It was one big pasture, and now you look at it, you hardly see houses because there are so many trees, that trees took over the whole field, but originally where there were none. So it can totally change. If you put too many trees in, you're really changing the, the, the view.
I have a suggestion.
Okay. Um, yeah, Patty, and then I wanna offer some comments.
I have a real quick suggestion as to a condition. We could say something about scenic review will take into consideration landscaping to reduce the view plane, um, impacts of the development. That, you know, and I think that would be part of the landscape plan, and ra- and this maybe it needs needed some additional trees rather than rows of trees screening the house because we definitely don't wanna see that. So I think we should just maybe add a condition that says, "We'll take into consideration, um, scenic, scenic impacts other than from the high, or from the county roads." Something simple, just so anybody who's reviewing it administrat- administratively in the future would know to take that into consideration.
I just would note, based on Suzanne's comment, that if we refer to the county roads, then it won't capture any of the concern, um, from the school or from the, that private.
That's why I said in addition to the county roads.
Okay. So I'm fine with that. I'm, I'm fine with the applicant's request to, um, have the caretaker unit size go up to 1,000 square feet. That comes out of their F A R, as well as confirming that the, you know, our standing policies, right, which are, that the G M Q S, um, rights are, continue on, they don't expire, and that the T D R development rights continue on. I think I am operating a little bit with, like, unclear information because I'm, I guess I'm unclear, like, again, what happens if the, um, in relationship to the settlement agreement with the vested rights? So on one hand, our policy is that T D R, you know, development rights, um, issued due to T D Rs perpetuates, but if the vested rights go away, does that mean it's only applicable for 2,500 square feet as opposed to the 5,000 square feet? Um, you know, does that matter here? Um, so, I don't know. I'm a little, I'm a little uncomfortable with, with all the information we have in front of us, and I don't feel like I have a clear direction from the board on the question of five-year vesting. Um, I'm more comfortable with three, and, you know, based on hearing Suzanne say that, you know, they have three years to come in and ask for site plan approval, and then another three years beyond that, once they get site plan approval. So before even needing to come in with a development permit is already six years. Um, if we extended it to five, that looks at eight. I don't know, again, if that's important to the board, but I'm not sure I have total clarity on where our board stands on Patty's proposal. So, that's where I'm at, a little bit. Um, so let me check in. Greg?
Um, I'm, I'm content to leave it at three. I, I, you know, that's not something they've asked for, so I'm not really, doesn't feel like we, we really need to extend that. They might come back in three years and ask again, but, um, I'm, I'm okay. If you have a real problem with it, I'm okay with three.
Okay. Um, Patty?
Yeah, well, I think what, you know, makes the information interesting is the fact that it's based on a settlement agreement. It's not your standard land use application. So there's a lot of things that are already written into the settlement agreement that we'll carry forward, such as house size, et cetera, et cetera. Things that we would technically normally, especially if George was here, be looking at capturing with a limited extension of vested rights. So for me, it's just a matter of spacing out the development over a greater period of time, recognizing the three years of vesting, the potential of three years of vesting for their development, their, their, their application, their next application. Um, so, but I don't think there's any harm in extending it out a little longer, but I can go either way. It depends on, you know, I'll see where the board's gonna go. I'm not gonna deny this because, um, because of two years further extension of vested rights.
I do wanna unpack that a little bit, though, because what I'm not clear about in a very, like, on a very specific point is, did the settlement agreement, um, give vested rights until 2021, and then that was it? And then all the points of that settlement agreement go away that aren't currently encapsulated in the code, um, at the time that they, that the vested rights goes away? Or, like, what about the settlement agreement never expires? You know, um, 'cause there was, you know, the initial vested rights and the 15 additional years. So, so what was the point of saying the vested rights went on for 15 years if, if there were things that in the settlement agreement was gonna carry on into forever, anyway? So, I, I don't know. I've seemed to be the only one fumbling over this.
No, that's a good, that's a good question. No, that's kind of what I asked John, and he seemed to think that the settlement agreement, there's no end date of a settlement agreement, of a lawsuit, I don't believe. Is that correct, John?
Well, what I really said is I'd have to check the agreement because I haven't seen it in, um...
20 years?
15 years, probably.
Um, so, you know, if that's an important question for everybody else, then great, and if it's not, then we can leave it here, but that's where I'm fumbling. Because again, if they're gonna get, you know, again, if they're gonna get 88,000 square feet regardless of what, you know, of whether we would decide to extend it today or not, then what does it matter? Right? Then extending another three years is fine, is totally fine. But if we're looking at sort of, okay, well, no, we don't wanna, you know, we're talking about, you know, 57 fair, 50 square foot development right that exists in our code, so if that all goes away and the settlement agreement goes away, um, you know, then, then that matters more, right, to like our bigger policy questions?
Well, I, I don't wanna have to continue this for John Ely to have to look at the settlement agreement, see if there's a deadline that, you know, a date that it expires. I, I'll just move forward with the three years and let's move it forward. But if, I mean, unless there's other concerns where we'd like to have, we'd like to have addressed based on the settlement agreement, then, um, I don't think John's gonna have the opportunity to review it tonight. Um, so we'd have to base this on a continuation until we had time for that information to come back to us, but I, I'm willing to go with three years and just move it forward if that's where the board would like to go.
So, yes, Suzanne?
Thanks, Kelly. I mean, you know, the applicant in the application, I mean, they've addressed this, you know, in some pretty good details in the application about what does it mean this is a site-specific development plan? You know, I think our position, staff position has been that, right, but it does not, the settlement agreement doesn't lapse on February 5th, 2021. They're not starting all over. Um, you know, so, and nothing, nothing speaks to that, that the settlement agreement goes away at a certain point in time. All it said was you're vested until 2021. So that's why, you know, we're here trying to clarify, obviously for the applicant, they'd like to clarify what their rights are moving forward, which is why they're asking for an extension. Sort of your opposite question to that is, what does it mean if we don't? Um, you know, then, right, we're up, trying to apply the current code, which in a lot of cases we're doing, you know, we're doing as part of this extension, um, you know, house size, you know, those kinds of things. I mean, I think we would move forward saying, "We gave them the right to use these TDRs. That's been our policy. That's how they would move forward." They'd have to go through site plan review because that's what the current code requires. So a lot of these pieces are what we would do to, even if we didn't extend the vested rights. Um, but again, obviously for the applicant, it provides some assurance against us making other changes in the code between now and the next three or five years, depending what you decide. Um, so, I, you know, I don't know if that, that kind of helps your consideration, but I think, you know, clearly, from our perspective, you're right, this is not, you know, 2021 was not the year, at the point when the settlement agreement ended. Um, it was just the vested right expired.
Okay. Thank you, Suzanne. Steve?
On page 280 of the packet is the settlement agreement, Exhibit C, so maybe we can find if there's any determination on the end of the settlement agreement, looking at that real quickly.
Okay. You and I look at the packet differently.
Yeah. Well, I think it's up to the county attorney to advise us how that settlement agreement is interpreted, but, um, 'cause I think we still have before us a long list of conditions of approval that we need to fine tune also, so...
Um, Francie?
I just thought maybe I could stay for a minute while they're looking at that. Unfortunately, the way I see this is that Poughkeepsie County sort of lost its opportunity to restrict the house sizes on this property. We sort of said, "Okay, you guys can do this," and now we're talking about sort of other aspects of that. As, as much as I would love to see it change, I feel like, uh, it's a thing for the future for us to consider and really not the past. I wish that were the case, but it's kind of the way I see it. So I would be in favor of the five-year, um, extension for the five-year vested rights because I agree with Greg and Steve that, um, I think moving slowly with careful designs and everything and careful thought from the current owners is probably preferable to rushing in order to, so they don't have to go through this again. And then the other thing is, this is a lot of work and preparation for people and a lot of time, and so, um, I would have no trouble with changing it to five years.
Okay. So I think there's a majority on that point, and then, um, the only other condition I heard requested to be added was related to the screening during site plan review that I wanted to check in with the applicant, and then it sounded like Patty might have some other points on other conditions listed in the resolution. So I'll check in with Mike and Jocelyn related to the screening requirement or condition.
Okay. Thanks, Kelly. Thanks, board. Um, so, you know, I haven't been up to the community school for a few years, and even a few years ago, I did look at it with the perspective of what Chaparral build out would look like. Um, but Jocelyn may have a perspective, too, on this that she might wanna share. We, we think that maybe you can't even see the potential building envelopes from, from that, but I'll, I'll let Jocelyn speak if she has any more information on that.
Oh, my understanding from being up on the, the base of, there are community schools that, um, you can see parts of Chaparral from there, but it's the, what, what Suzanne was referring to as that upper bench, and so it's the very, it's the top of lots, um, Homesteads 4 and 5, I think, and not the lower. I do not think you can see Homestead 3 from the community school or Homestead 2. Um, and, you know, as far as the building envelope on Homestead 4, I don't really know, but that would be subject to site plan review because they're not in the process. Um, as for Homestead 3 and the visibility from Little Woody, um, Creek Road, what you can see from Little Woody Creek Road is the Braun home, their cabin. That historic cabin sits right on the top of the bench, um, overlooking, and it's been there since the 1800s before most of the residents on Little Woody. It's been there for a very long time. Um, there are proposed residents having, you know, because I've worked with the Design Review Committee at Chaparral, the proposed residence on the Braun property, Homestead 3, is further to the west. I don't think it would be visible from, um, from Little Woody, certainly. And then Homestead 2, we just finished the design review on that parcel, and that property is down in a hollow, and so it, it sits very low on the property. Um, I, I don't think staff probably has had the opportunity to look at that plan yet. I mean, the application was just being complete last week or two weeks ago, so, but that is, I mean, we had concerns, um, about the neighbors on Little Woody as well, and I believe that, you know, they will not be subject to site plan review if they move forward under their current permit, but that's how it sits down in a hollow. Um, that is much lower than, um, some of the other parts of Chaparral. So that's, you know, what I know.
Okay. Patty?
So the question is, is the applicant okay if we write in a condition that just says the issue with scenic view plane screening, um, outside of county roads, just to be part of the evaluation as part of the landscape plan? And so if it doesn't apply, I don't think it's a problem. If it applies, then it's important.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, we're, we're fine with that, but I'd just like to add that, you know... know, we also don't want to make a big row of trees and, and make it unnatural looking. We're, we're not looking for that and I don't think that you all either are looking for that. But, you know, we could add language that says that we'll make a good faith effort to study it and then implement landscaping, um, if it's necessary.
And Kelly, are you asking that it be specifically from, um, the campus campus? You know, the, the community school campus there, screening from that or screening from the world?
I don't think, I don't think you can screen it from the world. I think there's just, there's a fact that people are going to see buildings. It's just that, like Greg's point was that the, that just the remote nature of the camp, of the campus, um, he'd hate to see that being, you know, impacted by a new development. Um, so I, I think it, I think it's just in that direction. I'm speaking for Greg, but Greg, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
So everybody's talking about the view from, uh, the community school campus. Uh, when you drive along Highway 82, you'll be able to see all of the houses as well as you see all the houses on Aspen Valley Ranch and Starwood and some of them on McLean Plats. Looking at houses is what we all look at when you go almost anywhere and, um, it's not going to be substantially different from, from what it is, from what people are looking at now. Um, Chaparral will be more houses and less open hayfield kind of appearance, but we can't change that now that, that was decided many years ago. Um, so we, I mean, we have to accept some things. I'm not trying to change that, not trying to change the, the development. And I think what they have done, um, is reduce the total mass of, of the project and with some discreet landscaping of, you know, good clumps of vegetation here and there will also reduce the size, you know, the appearance of, the size of the houses. So I'm good with the object as it is. I would like to see the five-year vesting though.
Thanks, Steve. And I'll note, Ry Neely sent me a note that he can address the, my vesting confusion. If so, Ry, please.
Thanks, Kelly. Um, I just want to clarify your point about the settlement agreement in general. So what the settlement agreement did was set out, uh, a specific vesting period in that document. Certain things, uh, certain aspects of the settlement agreement themselves, like the location of the lot sizes, uh, the existence of the subdivision itself, those types of things are not only protected by the settlement agreement, but the recordation of the plaque back when that happened in 2000. The, those things, for better or worse, those exist and are protected by the very existence of the plaque. Things like house stuff, uh, house size, except where they are protected by, uh, the historic incentives and the, uh, attended covenants that went along with those historic incentives, those are, those are basically on the table. The, what the code requires specifically now when you're considering extension of vested rights is whether you're going to bring the development into compliance with the existing land use code. So that is, uh, and I think Suzanne can probably clarify that. And that was sort of the basis that we were operating on when we were reviewing the application and bringing it forward to the board at this point. So specifically what they're asking for with their request to enlarge vested rights is that you affirm their ability to develop outside of the current realm of the code right now. And what they're offering you is those things that Mike and Jocelyn have outlined for you as reasons to allow that development scheme to proceed another three years. So.
Okay.
If that helps with that.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think I got it. Um, you know, and quite honestly, our code still allows 15,000 square feet anyway. So.
That's, that's exactly right. I think what you're looking at, some of the aspects of the development, that wouldn't be allowed by the code at this point.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. I've, I've figured it out. Sorry to take everybody's time.
No, that's a good point to figure out.
And thanks for joining us, Ry. Any, what other points do we need to figure out? It sounds like we've had the addition, uh, the change to a five-year vesting and the addition of the screening condition. Um, Suzanne?
Thanks, Kelly. Yeah, I do have a number of like clarifications to make in the resolution if you're ready for me to walk through those with you.
Yes, thank you.
Um, great. Um, so first, on page two of the resolution, recital number six, um, towards the bottom of that paragraph, there's a, the statement that TDRs severed from the remote parcels are required to be utilized on Homestead parcels. As we've discussed, that, that is not correct. That was not what was required in the, it was not required in the settlement agreement. So I think appropriate to just strike that, that line because basically we're just reciting what, you know, what was, what came out of the settlement agreement there.
Okay.
Um, so that's that. Um, and on, let's see, recital number 11J, same clarification, strike that language about requiring the TDRs to be used on the main ranch. Um, then I move into the conditions. Um, so now I'm on page five of the resolution, condition number four. Um, we had said within 90 days, um, submit an amendment to the protective covenants for review. Um, the applicant has requested if they could have 120 days and that's fine. Our, our purpose is just to set some deadline to, to, that we can refer to, to make it happen. Um, so again, that just provides them some additional time to draft those changes, have them reviewed by staff and then go through the, the approval and recording process. So we're fine with that. Um, condition number five, um, the applicant asked for a clarification about the garage space, that if it, if an owner would like to have a larger than 750 square foot garage, they could, um, but that additional beyond 750 would come out of their primary floor area. So I would add that statement, garages may exceed 700 square, 750 square feet, but any garage space in excess of 750 shall count as floor area.
Okay.
One clarification, and this wasn't, it's something that popped into my head as we were going through this today, is, um, the idea for people, for, let's see, sorry, for the additional floor area on all of these, on all of these homesteads, that can only come from TDRs. There's been sort of some discussion about, you know, what could, or they could compete in growth management, but there's actually the, uh, the requirement in the code today, section 63050C, instead of something with, a, a parcel was approved as a TDR receiver site, they cannot come back and ask to use growth management instead. So essentially we are limiting them, the, those six TDR homesteads to only use TDRs for the initial development right and all of the floor area that they want to build. So there wouldn't be an opportunity to say, well, I'll use my first 5,000 with a TDR, but then compete in growth management for some of the other additional floor area. So I would like to add some language specifying that, that it's just using TDRs for them to, you know, accommodate this floor area. Um, also in condition number five, um, C and D, uh, the applicant requested some language to just clarify that those are the two homesteads that have submitted building permits that are in process, um, that only if those building permits were to expire and not be acted upon, that then these limitations would apply that are specified in the resolution, because right now the permits they've submitted are based on the floor areas allowed under the, the original settlement agreement. So, so it's just a clarification, if they end up not acting on those permits, they're then subject to, to these conditions and that's what the applicant has agreed to. Um, I think just a couple more. Um, oh, on number six, where we say the floor area definition would be calculated based on what's in effect at the time a permit is submitted. Um, currently in the rural area, we don't provide for below grade space. So I wanted to capture our current definition of below grade space that applies in the urban growth boundary. But the only clarification is that the below grade space is for principal single-family residences. So you can only put that under your principal residence. If you have accessory structures or whatnot, they can't also have below grade space. So just wanted to clarify that point. Um...
You can't have a potato cellar in the barn?
Or a, so underground swimming pool.
You can't have a barn, you can't have a barn on your individual homestead, only on the comp.
So skip the potatoes.
Um, condition 8A, I think is where I would add the language we've been talking about for the scenic review.
Perfect.
And I think what I heard most recently is the consideration Patty talked about with landscaping to reduce scenic impact, I think we were saying specifically from the Aspen Community School campus, um, and not a broader, some undefined area.
Yeah.
Um, and I get further clarification on that.
Steve?
I would say from whatever direction that is, which could potentially shield the, the view of the people who live in Little Woody Creek also, which is also the same direction as the community school. But I don't know exactly, you know, I'd have to look at a map of all the buildings.
Yeah, I think they're too low on Woody Creek, but.
Is that an easterly direct, east, easterly direction or what direction is that?
Southeast?
Northeast?
Yeah, I mean, generally to the east. I mean, the properties on Little Woody Creek Road are below, you know? Um, again, I guess, I, you know, I'm just looking for you to give me the direction on, if you want it that broad as just from the east or, you know, because again, then you're bringing in all of the private property owners who own, you know, property anywhere up on the same mesa as the community school or, you know, again, we're definitely really broadening what we would normally look at under, um, under the code requirements.
Steve?
I, I think, I mean, we should be concerned about the view from Aspen Valley Downs also and from the highway and from Rush Creek Village. I think any clumps of landscaping near a house is going to kind of buffer the view of it and lessen the, the bulk appearance of the falls. And I think that's what we're, we're trying to achieve. So it doesn't matter which side of the house the landscaping is on. I think it would help from all directions.
Patty has a comment on that?
Yeah, I, I, I'm thinking that's going too far because then you can say from West Buttermilk and Maroon Creek and Five Trees. Um, I think Greg's point was specific to kind of the philosophy of the school there and their open view plane. Um, we can't make houses disappear. You know, when people build a house next door to you, you're going to have to see the house. Um, and, and we, we, we can't protect the view plane, then it'll be from airplanes flying over. You know, I think Greg's point was specific and I would like to just leave it specific rather than, you know, having people build their houses within a forest that'll make it stand out even more and be inappropriate on the historic use of that land.
Okay. Any, I, I'm inclined to agree with Patty. Um, I just want to check in with Greg and Francie, see if you have any inclinations. Greg?
Um, yeah, thanks, Kelly. Um, yeah, I was starting to get away from us there. Um, I was being specific to the campus of the school, just thinking that's a high-traffic area for a lot of people. Um, if we could make it specific to that, uh, and so, so just as it's considered and mentioned, as Suzanne had suggested earlier, that was, that's kind of where I was going. Um, I'm not, I don't want to try and, you can't screen it from the entire world, as Patty says, and I wouldn't, I wasn't suggesting that. So if we could bring it back around, it, it's probably not really an issue, except for maybe in one case, it sounds like. Um, so I'd just love to have that, if, if that could be considered without, if it's not an onerous thing to do, um, I would love to insert that in so it's part of the administrative review. Um, uh, and then I'd be satisfied with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Francie?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with limiting it to the community school as well. I'm just wondering, wouldn't it be covered in the site plan though, Suzanne, anyway?
No.
And we would cover it from the designated public road, so Woody.
Oh, we would, oh, we would.
But not from adjacent property.
Um, yeah. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's fine with me too. I mean, I am a former community school teacher. I got my start as a volunteer librarian at the Aspen Community School. I'm okay with that wording too.
Steve, you are a Picken County treasure, is what you are.
Okay, moving forward.
Okay. How, where else are we at, Suzanne?
Um, so, okay, just a couple more things. Um, to the point where I just said, if, on two and three, if those building permits expire, then they're subject to those floor area limits? They should also be subject to site plan review if they let those permits expire. Then they would come into the process. So I would add that in condition number eight. After that, I think, you know, the change is condition 19, if you all are agreeing to go with the five-year vested right.
I'm not, but everybody else is.
Five years.
Hanging in there for George.
I know, I got to keep George's spirit alive.
So, but I thought, Mike, did you have other? I thought there were more conditions that we needed to.
I don't think so.
Nope, I think those were the, um, conditions that we brought to Suzanne's attention before the hearing and she explained them, um, really well and that's, we're okay with all that.
Well, thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, Greg?
Um, I'm sorry, I need to check in where are we? Did we have our public, uh, hearing input on this yet? I think we did, didn't we?
Yes.
And if we did, I'd love to make a motion.
Please. Please do.
I'd make a motion, yeah, emotionally prove, uh, I think I heard five-year extension of vested rights for Chaparral Aspen Homesteads, one dash 11A, and Chaparral Remote Parcels one to 10, uh, with conditions as described by Suzanne. Is that?
Yeah, I will second that.
Any further discussion?
I do have one more.
Yes, Patty?
Unless the applicant would prefer only three years?
Um, we greatly appreciate a five-year vested right and we want to thank the board for that. Um, and yeah, we'll accept it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? I am seeing none. Um, I'll just say, you know, I have to make you squirm in a land use hearing, I can't help it. So thanks for bearing with me. All right. Everybody, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Mike, good to see you. You can send me baby pictures anytime.
Congrats.
They're coming in five minutes, Patty.
Right here.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Good to see you.
Okay, we're almost done, folks. We still have some open discussion. So, um, let me check in with County Manager John Peacock. Do you have anything for us?
I don't have anything new for you today.
Okay. Patty?
I have two issues and I'm not, I just want to bring them to the board's attention. We've had a long day today, so, and these are long issues. Um, on the Core Act, Greg, I know you've been supportive really into the Core Act. Um, I'm greatly concerned that our congressional representative is asking for all public lands within Congressional District Three, right, to be removed from the Core Act. Um, I don't know which of her constituents she talked to about this, but I don't think she talked to the people in Picken County. Um, so, um, I don't know how we should approach it because I'm not sure when that vote will take place, but Greg might have an idea?
Um, yes. Uh, I said that earlier, they were asking us to send letters today, which means it's individual letters and couldn't do it as board. Um, but I, I, I think Congressman DeGuss was bringing that forward today. So for all the, all the county commissioners who support the Core Act, they're asking for people to weigh in so DeGuss could, uh...
people to weigh in, so DeGuss could mention our steadfast support of the Core Act in his arguments. So, if you have a chance to dash something off, I know there's, you could use, you've got some prototypes, if you want to slap your name on some verbiage or adjust it, but I think before the end of the day would probably be, which is, you know, maybe that's already happened, but maybe they're going into the night, I don't know.
So, would John Whitney be giving us an update, you think, as to what happened today?
Yeah, he will be updating us, and if you have any concerns, you send it to, I've got emails from here from him just now saying, "Thanks for your thoughts." I sent mine earlier. But you'd send them to Whitney, and so Bennett's office would give them to DeGuss. That's how they're asked to do it, through Bennett, since he's our guy.
Could you forward on to me the letter you sent, and I can use it as a template?
Sure. And I think, I may have already shared that with Charlotte, but I'll send those to you individually.
Okay, okay. And so, the other issue I had was the, I don't know if the Garfield County Commissioners actually passed a formal resolution regarding the oil and gas exploration on public lands, what is the 3030? And I would like for this board to consider writing our own resolution on the flip side of probably where Garfield County came out, as to the need to protect, you know, and limit exploration and extraction of natural resources off of public lands. And it's brought to my attention today, if we look back at the history, right, Kelly, of our county, our county used to be, our economy was based on extraction of natural resources, and we're now living with the repercussions and the damage to our public lands, to our air quality and our water quality, from what was left over from the mining industry in Picking County. And we've benefited actually from the recreational values that we fight so hard to protect in our public lands, and I think that that might be worthy of us doing a resolution of some kind, or something stating that we support these issues related to extraction, especially to oil and gas industry on public lands, because of the impacts to our community felt from what's happening in Garfield County.
Yeah, my argument was, hey, we have a 70-year track record of transferring our economy from an extractive one to one based on valuing our natural resources. So, Garfield County needs to get on board.
Yeah, so, I think that's something, and maybe we can talk, everybody, I want to just place a seed of thought in your brain, so maybe next week, John, at our, at our regular meeting, we can, to discuss this in open discussion, when we're not, we haven't had maybe quite as long a day as we've had today.
Francie?
I just wanted to remind us that when we were reviewing the place that had the little pond, Steve's place, compared to the huge piece of property, that we talked about how we probably need to work on our land use code in order to address the digging of the holes in which water will eventually flow. And so, I don't know where that's going to go, but it would be nice if we did that before it comes up again, so we don't trap more people in our lack of that being in the code.
Kelly's taking... I'm adding it to my to-do's. Okay, and then I do have something that I want to check in with the board on. There is a bill up in committee tomorrow that is being promoted by the Division of Housing, and what it would do is, gosh, I'm not going to articulate this well at the moment, is give access to undocumented residents for state and local funded housing solutions. So, state-sponsored affordable housing could apply, could be opened up to undocumented residents. And I wanted to check in with our board if we would support that, because we've been asked to testify in favor of it, if we would. Currently, all the lobbyists registered for it are in favor of it, which seemed kind of shocking to CCAT. The CCAT governing board is supporting it, but as individually, I don't want to testify in favor of it unless I check in with all of you. So, are there any questions? Because I think I can pull up some talking points that were sent to me this afternoon.
Is there any limitation? So, if you have a 10-unit development of, say, Picking County housing, would there be a percentage that, you know, kind of like they do with ADA compliant housing, that X amount of these units could go across the board, where the others would be reserved for, you know, valid, whatever you want to call it, residents?
So, I think it's permissive at this point, is my understanding, that there's no specified, like quota requirement.
So, it'd just be open?
Just as of now, a lot of, you know, government funding precludes being able to house people who are undocumented.
Right.
So, this addresses that. And I'm sorry, I'm looking for the talking points that were sent to me.
I know that when you get federally funded, like, some of the units out at the Inn at Aspen, not the Inn at Aspen, Aspen, Neil Pomegranate, whatever it is over there, they couldn't do that, because it's really strict because of the use of federal funds there. It's very narrow scope, and I don't know about the use of our funds to our housing mitigation fund and the use of those. I'm looking at John Ely up on the screen for undocumented workers. Do we have a restriction there?
We have a restriction on expenditure of funds as a function of state law. There are, there are ways to discuss its full applicability and restriction of the things that we want to accomplish. It's just a tricky bit of an analysis. So, it's not a black and white answer I can give you, Patty.
Good, all right.
You tell me, I'm going to try to accomplish something, and I'll work.
I can do whatever I want to do, John, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, well, as long as what you want to do is tell me your wish.
It's 19 years I've been trying, John.
So, let me just be a little more specific. So, I'll just, it says, "Current law provides several exceptions to the public policy declaration that all persons 18 years of age or older shall provide proof that they are lawfully present in the United States prior to the receipt of certain public benefits. This bill adds housing assistance to these exceptions, and passage of the bill will mean that verification of lawful presence would not be required for receipt of public or assisted housing, housing services, housing assistance, or other similar benefit."
I can support that.
And that's what I have so far.
Oh, yeah, there'd be no reason for it not to. What the bill tries to do is clear up the gray area that you have to live within if you're trying to accomplish housing, people without documentation.
Yeah, and some of the benefits are related to, you know, housing as a social determinant of health, the fact that many children are lawfully present, but their parents may not be, and so that prevents access for, housing for children, related to the workforce, how much our workforce relies on undocumented...
But it ties it into the broader exceptions provided to undocumented workers, and I think that that, it's not like a standalone, and I don't disagree with batting it into the exceptions.
Okay, so, there's a group? Francie, Steve?
Well, yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of that. The work I've been doing this week with Farmers Union, we're working for a track to citizenship for foreign agricultural workers. And that could be a possible amendment to it, if there's resistance to it, to make it, the housing available for undocumented workers who are on a track to achieve citizenship in so many years. I realize that hasn't gone through Congress yet. I hope it does make it through Congress.
Okay. All right, thanks for your support. That was all my open discussion. Any other open discussion? Okay, I'm seeing none. I will look for a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Thanks, Patty. Thank you all.
And I'll thank you.
Thank you, Francie. Any discussion?
No.
Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thanks, Grassroots, thanks, Terry.
Thank you all. And thanks, Grassroots.